Good afternoon, calling this 2 P M agenda of the Consumer Protection Commerce Committee to order. Thank you all for being here with us, some of you again, as you were just here yesterday. Just wanted to start off with a few housekeeping notes. Thank you so much to everyone who's here. If this is your first time testifying before the Consumer Protection and Commerce Committee, welcome. If you can make sure to change your Zoom names to reflect the name submitted under the testimony. That helps us to be able to spotlight you faster and it increases the efficiency of our hearings. Also, if you can keep yourselves muted until you're called, that's also helpful. But once I call your name or your organization, please feel free to unmute yourself so that you can proceed with your testimony. And because we have so many measures that move through the Consumer Protection Commerce Committee, and we want to give adequate time to discuss all of these very important measures. We do impose a two-minute time limit, so at about two minutes when our buzzer goes off, if you're still testifying, I'll gently ask you to start to summarize. Folks can keep that in mind, that's helpful to ensuring that many of these good bills continue on in the process. Also, I'd just like to ask, as is my custom and practice, that we just continue to extend each other courtesy, respect, and aloha. I think that's one of the things that makes Hawaii so much. Makes Hawaii a very unique, special place, especially vis a vis some of the discussion that goes on in our national body politics. So I would just ask for your kind indulgence and cooperation with that. With that, we'll go ahead and start with today's agenda, which has some very interesting topics as we move towards the lateral deadline of tomorrow. First off, we have HB twenty-two thirty. This is relating to motor carriers and it specifies of the fee for a common or contract carrier by motor vehicle that is a tour bus operator is 2.5% of the tour bus operator's gross revenue or $20, whichever is greater. We have our first testifier, the Public Utilities Commission, offering comments.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, and members. Michael Chapman, on behalf of PUC Chair Griffin, the commission stands on its written testimony, offering comments. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have the Hawaii Transportation Association, Gareth Sakakakita, in opposition.
Oh, Chair Johansson. Yes, we do oppose the bill. Last time the PC fee was increased by two times back in ninety-four. And we relented on the bill only because the chair committed to stepping up enforcement of illegal carriers. Increasing the fee ten times this time on a particular part of the industry that's been out of business pretty much for the past three years, well, we object to that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Gareth. Members, that's, please note, that's the extent of our testifiers who provided testimony on this measure. Is there anyone else wishing to testify in HB twenty-two thirty whom I haven't called? Okay, seeing no further testifiers, members, any questions?
Sure.
Representative Onishi.
Yeah, for the PUC. Can you give us what these funds would be used for?
These funds are generally used for things such as enforcement. The PUC regulates motor carriers such as tour companies and different transportation carriers. So the funds generally go to that. This isn't something that the commission has requested or is pursuing this funding, but it would go back to the same causes, the existing funds.
So your current fund, is it in need of additional funding? Or is it, is the current piece adequate to maintain your operation for your regulatory reason?
I believe that the commission finds that the current funding is adequate for this purpose and again, isn't pursuing additional funding through this type of mechanism.
Thank you, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Representative Onishi. Members, any additional questions? Okay, seeing no further questions, then we'll move on to our next agenda item HB fifteen forty-six. This is relating to air pollution. And it would require the DOH to, consistent with federal law, adopt cost-effective and technologically feasible regulations to prohibit engine exhaust and evaporative emissions from new small off-road engines. Would also require a report to the legislature as well as recommendations for funding commercial rebates or similar incentives to support the transition to zero emission, small off-road vehicle, off-road, excuse me, equipment operations. On HB fifteen forty-six, we have the Department of Health in opposition.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and committee members. My name is Mary Ann Rosio from the Department of Health. The department stands on its written testimony in opposition, and we're here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We also have the Department of the Attorney General in opposition.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. The, we have nothing to add to the written testimony, but if you have any questions, we're available.
Okay, thank you very much, Lyle. We also have Ted Boland with Climate Protectors Hawaii in support.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. The Climate Protectors Hawaii stands on its written testimony in strong support of this, to the extent allowed under federal law. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you very much, Ted. We also have Matthew Guyer in support.
Aloha Chair, members of the committee. Thank you for hearing and supporting these environmental measures that we so desperately need for, to tackle our climate emergency. We need to tackle it from all angles. Aloha.
Thank you very much, Matthew. We also have late testimony from Dave Molinex in support, who is not here. Members, please note that we have additional individual and organizational testimonies in support as well as opposition on HB fourteen sixteen. Is there anyone else wishing to testify in HB fifteen? I'm sorry, I said the wrong number, on HB fifteen forty-six. Okay, seeing no further testifiers, members, any questions on HB fifteen forty-six? Okay, seeing no questions on HB fifteen forty-six, then we will move on to the next measure, HB eighteen eighty-four. This is relating to the statewide traffic code, and it prohibits any person whose driver's license has been administratively revoked or has been convicted for offenses involving operating a vehicle under the influence of intoxicant from being eligible for a driver's license without providing proof of compliance with the ignition interlock law. It prohibits a person from driving for two years if the person does not own or have the use of a vehicle for the installation of an ignition interlock device or is otherwise unable to drive during the revocation period. On HB eighteen eighty-four, we have the Office of the Public Defender in opposition.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. The Office of the Public Defender stands in strong opposition to this bill. There is already ignition interlock requirements currently built into our system, and they are already creating a disadvantage for the indigent that, you know, my office represents. Currently, our, you know, system of punishing O V U I offenders allows people to kind of buy their way out of the long-term consequences and the cycle of jail that a lot of our clients at the Public Defender's Office find themselves in. So to create a requirement that someone would have to own their own vehicle that can have an interlock installed or they're facing this even longer revocation period, just increases the unfairness that our clients are already facing. So we would support, you know, creating a non-monetary system of community service work that's required across the board, because that would be fair. But creating this, it's just going to increase the inequity. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today.
Thank you very much, Antoine. We also have the Honolulu Police Department in support.
Hello, Chair, Vice Chair, committee members. Acting Captain Andre Peters of the Honolulu Police Department, we stand in support of this bill. And if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much, Captain Peters. We also have the Department of the Prosecuting Attorney, sitting attorney of Honolulu, offering comments.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Deputy Prosecutor Tricia Makamatsu, on behalf of the Honolulu Prosecuting Attorney's Department. You have our testimony before you. We just noted some concerns about possible unintended consequences, different ways that this might affect the counties differently. And we do feel that there's perhaps better ways to achieve a similar goal of basically holding people accountable to their offenses. And in particular, we feel that there should be an emphasis on encouraging more people to get ignition interlock, not just cracking down on those who already have it, but really just trying to get as many offenders on ignition interlock as possible. And so we have some just suggestions that are available for questions, if any. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tricia. On HB eighteen eighty-four, we also have Joanne Hamaji Oto with Smart Start LLC in support.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Joanne Hamaji Oto, Territory Operations Director for Smart Start LLC, offering testimony in support of House Bill eighteen eighty-four relating to the statewide traffic code. We support closing a gap in the current law, which allows people who have already pled guilty, been convicted or administratively adjudicated, to have been impaired while driving, to continue to attempt to drive junk without limit on restoration of their license. This is not only wrong, but dangerous. We support this bill because a person blows into an interlock device while impaired and demonstrating that they cannot yet drive sober. This bill recognizes that a driver's license is a privilege that should only be granted to those that can drive safely. Under House Bill eighteen eighty-four, previously adjudicated junk drivers using interlock must have a certain period of no recordable violations before removal, known as a compliance-based regulation, which is law currently in thirty-four states. Interlock-compliant-based removal laws are important in teaching sober driving behavior. Currently, O V U I offenders in Hawaii merely have their interlock removed when it's come to end their program, whether they have proof of sobriety to drive or not, or they choose to bring it out the revocation period and do not install an interlock. Since the implementation of Hawaii's interlock law in twenty-eleven, we have prevented more than a hundred thousand drunk driving attempts. The interlock did what it's supposed to do. It prevented drunk driving and injury and death it causes. An indigent program is available for those that qualify to lessen the costs associated with an interlock. It is already working. I'm glad to address the details of the program. If you have questions, we urge you to pass House Bill eighteen eighty-four to help save lives and keep Hawaii roads safe. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you very much, Joanne. We also have late testimony indicating they would be here from the Department of Transportation, who is not here. Members, please note, we also have supportive testimony proffered from various organizations as well as individuals and comments from the judiciary on this measure. Is there anyone else whom I haven't called wishing to testify in HB eighteen eighty-four? Okay, seeing no further testifiers on HB eighteen eighty-four, then we will transition to questions. Members, any questions on HB eighteen eighty-four? Okay, seeing no questions, then we will move on to our next agenda item HB twenty-one ten. This is relating to advanced warning for excavation. And it applies the existing advanced warning requirements to excavators operating on residential properties and clarifies various excavation requirements and reporting procedures. On HB twenty-one ten, we have the Hawaii Public Utilities Commission in support.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, and members. The commission stands on its written testimony in support of this admin bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. We also have Tim Lyons with Hawaii Pest Control Association in support. Tim, you have to unmute yourself.
Yes, thank you. Chair and Vice Chair, members of the committee. The Hawaii Pest Control Association is also in support of this bill. The need for Um, the need for it is that when pest control operators apply a liquid termiticide, they do so around the perimeter of a residence, and they do that by digging a very shallow trench, um, two to four inches typically um around the house. Um, the legislature, in its wisdom, passed Act sixty seventy-two in two thousand and nine that exempted the pest control operators. And then there was another um bill shortly thereafter when that expired for another three years. So that the pest, uh, Public Utilities Commission then entered um into investigation as to what is the risk, and they came back and concluded that there was sufficient evidence uh to base the determination that these activities of pest control operators do not pose a level of risk um that would require them to cooperate with the call center. So um, the amendment that we are seeking is at the bottom um on page two, lines fourteen through sixteen, which removes the words "if the excavation is being performed by the person who owns or operate, or owns or occupies the property." The need for that is that these um liquid termiticides are what's called restricted-use pesticides. In other words, only a person that is certified can apply them. The homeowner would not be able to apply their own liquid um termiticide. Therefore, we need that, and just for the um committee's information, when the PUC looked at this situation and investigated it, uh, there were three breaks between two thousand and seven and two thousand and twelve. They calculated that to be an incident rate of point zero 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 one three eight eight. So the incident level is very, very low. Um, and as a result, this exemption needs to continue with the verbiage that's in this bill as long as you have that amendment. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tim. Uh, we also have Hawaii Gas in support, Julie Anker. Uh, not here, uh, in support. Uh, members, please note, there's also additional testimony proffered in support um and opposition on HB twenty-one ten. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on HB twenty-one ten? Okay, seeing no further testifiers, members, any questions on HB twenty-one ten? Uh, okay, if no one has questions, um, I just have one quick question for the PUC, please.
Yes, Chair.
Uh, thanks, Michael. Um, so you've heard the testimony of the Pest Control Association. Um, and I, I just, not being an expert on this, uh, it'd be helpful to have you sort of opine on whether or not uh, page two, lines fourteen through sixteen is necessary um to complete in the bill. And if so, why, now that you've heard um the request for deletion? And if not, um, it's helpful to know that as well.
Yes, so um, the commission spoke with the Hawaii Pest Control Association and came to the agreement that it should be removed. Just to clarify, the bill as written um would exempt uh excavation on residential property of less than twelve inches. But it specifies that that's only if the homeowner is the one doing the excavation. So if we make the amendment, or if the committee makes the amendment and removes that uh section of language, then it will be any excavation of less than twelve inches on residential property is exempt from the requirements. So the commission, um, as Mr. Lyons uh explained, has found that there's not much risk from that kind of operation, and the commission thinks that it's reasonable to uh make that amendment.
Thank you very much, Michael. Members, any additional questions on HB twenty-one ten? Okay, um, see, seeing no further questions, then we'll move on to our next agenda item HB twenty-one seventy-eight. This is relating to tax expenditure accountability. It requires laws that enact, modify, or extend the availability of a tax expenditure to contain specific information, revenue estimates, and analyses before becoming law. It allows the disclosure of certain tax expenditure information. On HB twenty-one seventy-eight, um, we have uh Georgia Skinner from D-Bed in support. Sorry, not here. Um, about Scott Glenn with the Hawaii State Energy Office offering comments.
Aloha, Chair, Johansson, aloha, Vice Chair Kirigawa, and members of the committee. We stand on our uh testimony with comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, we also have Department of Taxation. Oh, sorry. Okay, it doesn't.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members. Josh Michaels on behalf of the Department of Tax will stand on our testimony, offer a strong support, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Josh. We also have um late testimony indicating that they would be here from the Tax Foundation of Hawaii, offering comments.
Uh, thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Tom Yamachika from Tax Foundation. Uh, I'm sorry, we don't share the uh, the same optimism that the Department of Tax has. Uh, we uh look at this bill as largely symbolic because one legislature really cannot bind another. Uh, we uh, we, we believe that if the committee wants to uh push this bill forward, we think that uh analyses of this kind uh are good and should be included in all uh bills that either uh raise revenue uh or create a tax expenditure. Should, it should go both ways. Uh, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Tom. Uh, members, please note, we also have additional supportive testimony proffered on HB twenty-one seventy-eight. Is there anyone else wishing to testify in HB twenty-one seventy-eight? Okay, seeing no further testifiers, members, any questions on HB twenty-one seventy-eight? Okay, seeing no questions, then we'll move on to our next agenda item HB twenty-two twenty-seven, and this is relating to the Made in Hawaii program. It transfers the enforcement of the Made in Hawaii trademark from the Department of Agriculture to the Department of Commerce and Consumer Affairs, and it renames the Hawaii-made program into Made in Hawaii program, as well as appropriating additional funds. On HB twenty-two twenty-seven, we have the Department of Commerce and Consumer Affairs in opposition.
Uh, good afternoon, I'm Steve Levens from the Office of Consumer Protection, and we are opposed to this measure. There's no question that the state has a compelling interest in promoting made-in-Hawaii products. And the Department of Agriculture and D-Bed do a very good job in doing this. However, the enforcement provisions do not have to be changed to achieve this. Currently, the Department of Agriculture has the expertise and background to review compliance issues, and the Attorney General has the authority to enforce. There's simply no reason to transfer the enforcement element to the Department of Commerce and Consumer Affairs. It's a very puzzling uh measure, and we don't think that it's, it's appropriate to transfer the enforcement. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Steve. Uh, we also have the Department of Agriculture offering comments.
Hello, Chair, committee members. The department will stand on its testimony, um, offering clarifying remarks. Thank you.
Uh, thank you very much, Morris. Uh, we also have Mark Ritchie with D-Bed offering comments.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. D-Bed will stand on its written testimony, offering comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Members, please note, we also have additional comments and a supportive testimony from different agencies or organizations. On HB twenty-two twenty-seven, is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Okay, seeing no further testifiers, members, any questions? Okay, seeing no questions, then we'll move on to our next agenda item HB eighteen fifty-two relating to the Unemployment Compensation Trust Fund. This appropriates funds for the Unemployment Compensation Trust Fund. On eighteen fifty-two, we have the Department of Labor and Industrial Relations offering comments.
Good afternoon, Chair Johansson, Vice Chair Kirigawa, and members of the committee. The department stands on its written testimony with comments, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Director. Uh, we also have uh late testimony in support from the Hawaii Food Industry Association.
Good afternoon, Chair and Committee members. We stand on our testimony in support, and we're available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Alexis. Uh, members, please note that we also have uh comments and an oppositional testimony um on HB eighteen fifty-two. Is there anyone else wishing to testify in HB eighteen fifty-two, who might have? Okay, seeing no further testifiers, members, any questions on HB eighteen fifty-two? Okay, seeing uh no questions on HB eighteen fifty-two, then we'll move on to our next agenda item HB twenty-one fifty-eight. This is relating to the Boiler and Elevator Safety Law. It allows the Director of Labor and Industrial Relations to permit owner-user inspectors in the exclusive employment of owner-user inspection organizations to perform inspections on pressure-retaining items. It extends the time from ten to thirteen years for the director to reimburse the general fund from the boiler and elevator revolving fund. On HB twenty-one fifty-eight, we have the Department of Labor and Industrial Relations in support.
And good afternoon, Chair Johansson, Vice Chair Kirigawa, and members of the committee. Anne Ustakia, Director, Department of Labor. I want to thank the Chair for taking the time to hear this administrative bill. The department stands on its written testimony in strong support, and I am available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have uh Hawaiian Electric in support.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. My name is Simon Powell, um, testifying on behalf of Hawaiian Electric in strong support of this bill. The bill helps to clarify by statute the ability of the director to allow owner-user inspections or organizations to perform inspections of boilers and pressure vessels. It would align the Hawaii revised statutes with the current Hawaii administrative rules. Hawaiian Electric's been an authorized owner-user organization by the National Board and State of Hawaii for twenty-two years. We employ National Board Commission Boiler and Pressure Vessel Inspectors to perform our boiler and pressure vessel inspections. Our inspectors are certified to the same standards as insurance companies, special inspectors, and state-of-Hawaii jurisdiction, jurisdictional inspectors. Um, our owner-user inspection organization provides consistent inspection personnel. They're intimately familiar with the boilers, pressure vessels being inspected. The inspectors are readily available for inspections and consultations, which improves our ability to serve our customers, and they maintain a professional relationship with the state-of-Hawaii Boiler and Elevator Inspection Branch, which results in clear expectations, better communication, and problem resolutions. Loss of the ability to perform inspections under our owner-user inspection organization would result in increased costs to the company and potential delays repairing our critical infrastructure to return to operation and serve our customers. So uh accordingly, Hawaiian Electric strongly supports this bill, HB twenty-one fifty-eight, and thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you very much, Simon. Uh, we also have Par Hawaii in support. Um, I, we're having trouble hearing you. We can see you, though. Michael. Uh, still can't hear you, Michael. Still unable to hear anything. I can see that you've unmuted it, but we don't hear any sound on our end. Sorry, Michael, yeah. Um, uh, members, please note, uh, Michael Gaston with Par Hawaii's uh testimony in support of HB twenty-one fifty-eight, and our apologies, Michael, for the audio difficulty. Uh, is there uh anyone else wishing to testify in HB twenty-one fifty-eight? Okay, seeing no further testifiers, members, any questions on HB twenty-one fifty-eight? Okay, seeing uh no questions, then we'll continue to move on um to HB twenty-one fifty-nine. This is relating to Workforce Development Boards. This amends the Hawaii revised statutes to change the Workforce Development Council to the Workforce Development Board, and it requires the Board to develop written conflict of interest policies consistent with federal law. It amends the composition and powers of the Board. It makes other conforming amendments. On HB twenty-one fifty-nine, uh, we have Director Pereira Ustakia with Department of Labor and Industrial Relations in support.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. Anne Ustakia, Director, Department of Labor. Thank you, Chair, again, for hearing this important administration bill. The department stands on its written testimony in support and offers comments, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Director. Uh, on HB twenty-one fifty-nine, we also have late testimony from Alan Hayashi, uh, Workforce Development Board with comments. Who is not here. Okay, members, please note that that is the extent of the testimony provided on HB twenty-one fifty-nine. Is there anyone else wishing to testify in HB twenty-one fifty-nine? Okay, seeing no further testifiers, members, any questions on HB twenty-one fifty-nine? Okay, uh, if there are no questions, then we will move on to HB twenty-four sixty-nine. This is relating to the Unemployment Compensation Trust Fund. It establishes an unemployment compensation insolvency special fund to be extended solely to resolve an unemployment compensation trust fund insolvency emergency declared by the governor. It permits the governor to declare an unemployment compensation trust fund insolvency emergency and to expend monies from the special fund if the Director of Finance determines that the trust fund balance is insufficient to meet the state's obligations. It appropriates monies into the unemployment compensation insolvency special fund. On HB twenty-four sixty-nine, we have the Department of Labor and Industrial Relations Director.
Good afternoon, Chair Johansson, Vice Chair Kirigawa, and members of the committee. The department stands on its written testimony, offering comments, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have, uh, let's see, the Hawaii Food Industry Association offering late testimony in support.
Hello again, um, I'm Alexis Chapman for HFA, and we stand on our testimony in support and am available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Alexis. We also have uh Tom Yamachika with the Tax Foundation of Hawaii, offering comments.
Uh, thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Tom Yamachika from Tax Foundation. Uh, in our view, we already have a rainy day fund. It's the Emergency and Budget Reserve Fund in uh Section three twenty-eight L dash three. I don't think we need another one. Uh, if you, if we have a proliferation of uh rainy day funds, uh, we'll have the same problems that we now do figuring out how much money we have, either in an emergency or not. And uh, we don't want the complexity of that to increase. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Tom. Members, please note, we also on HB twenty-four sixty-nine have uh additional comments and opposition proffered on this measure. Is there anyone else wishing to testify in HB twenty-four sixty-nine? Okay, seeing no further testifiers, members, any questions on this measure? Okay, seeing no questions on HB twenty-four sixty-nine, then we will move on to HB twenty-four seventy-one. This is relating to the Adequate Reserve Fund. It amends the definition of the Adequate Reserve Fund to exclude the benefit cost rate from June twenty twenty through August twenty twenty-one, effective for calendar years twenty twenty-three through twenty thirty. On uh HB twenty-four seventy-one, uh, we have the Department of Labor and Industrial Relations offering their support.
And Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. I would like to thank the Chair again for hearing this very important administration bill. Uh, we stand on our written testimony in strong support. I would just like to point out that We stand on our written testimony in strong support. I would just like to point out that without statutory intervention, the adequate reserve fund definition will include the anomaly workflow outflows from 2020 to 2021 due to the disruptions caused by COVID-19, which created an unprecedented period of unemployment in Hawaii and resulted in the rapid depletion of funds from the UCTF. This measure will allow us to stabilize the solvency of this fund and provide an opportunity to collect contributions as well as mitigate the impact on employers in Hawaii. Thank you for allowing me to testify, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much, Director. Members, please note, on this measure, we also have a testimony provided in opposition. Is there anyone else wishing to testify in HB 2471? Okay, seeing no additional testifiers, members, any questions on HB 2471? Okay, seeing no questions from our members, then we'll move on to HB 1893. This is relating to the Oahu Regional Healthcare System, and it requires the transfer of the Daniel Kea Kaka State Veterans Home to the Oahu Regional Healthcare System and then to the Department of Health as part of the Oahu Regional Healthcare Systems' transfer pursuant to an act we passed last year. And it extends that date of the transfer of the Oahu Regional Healthcare System to the department by one year. On HB 1893, we have the Department of Health providing comments.
Good afternoon, Chair and members of the committee. I'm Marian Suji for the Department of Health. As required in Act 212, a report was submitted to the legislature outlining the complexity, the cost, and the activities of transitioning the Oahu region to DOH. The transition would cost an estimated 10.3 million with an annual post-transition cost of 5 million. At best, the timeframe would take us to the end of 2024. Thus, we would request that the committee extend the transition date to the end of 2025 for completion if the legislature chooses to continue with this transition. The report also identified an alternative structure that would enable the Oahu region to maintain a quasi-association with the department, much as HHSC currently has with DOH. This option would likely meet the transition deadline of December 31, 2023, and would cost about 1.7 million for transition and 1.4 million post-transition while achieving the goal. The measure, this measure HB 1893, which transfers the Daniel Kea Kaka Veterans Facility into the Oahu region, was not included in the report's analysis. The department seeks further clarification from the legislature regarding its preferred structure and setting the transition deadline accordingly. Thank you for the opportunity to testify, and I'm available for comments and questions.
Thank you very much, Deputy Director. We also have Department of Defense Office of Veteran Services Director Han in support.
Good afternoon, Chair Johansson and Vice Chair Kitagawa, members of the committee. Thank you very much. We are in strong support of this measure. I would tell you that the Daniel Kea Kaka State Veterans Home would not be a reality without your support. We do offer quite a few things that involve revenue fund stream for this particular home. It's very much akin to the Ukio Kutsu Home over in Hilo, Hawaii, the very first one. And it's run currently by the HHSC East Hawaii Region. And so one of the big things that we'd like to see happen is to try to put this into the healthcare entities role out from the DOD, which is maligned to be able to do that. This presents a perfect opportunity to make that happen. But also, we present, again, a revenue run stream. Projections are for year 2025 of about $4 million. That's covering all expenditures that will be the net in addition to possibly over 26, over $6 million each revenue that can assist, whether it be the HHSC or the Department of Health, with their requirements going into the future. That's been the case with the Hilo, Hawaii, Ukio Kutsu State Veterans Home, where they've garnered about a 1.5 million revenue piece for about the last 10 years prior to the pandemic. We stand upon our testimony and are available for any questions. Thank you for your support.
Thank you very much, Director. On HB 1893, we also have Sean Sanada with the Oahu Region, Hawaii Health Systems Corporation in support.
Good afternoon, Chair Johansson, Vice Chair Kitagawa. Sean's not on behalf of the Oahu Region. I'll just address three points. For the most part, we do stand on our written testimony. As to the Veterans Home, our board has yet to fully vet this issue, but as it, as a preliminary matter, we do support the intent and the premises behind it. In fact, we do have a meeting scheduled with Colonel Han and his staff next week, Thursday, I believe, to further explore this venture. As to the extension of time and the alternative measure, we'll just, that might sound repetitive because we basically will echo what Ms. Suji from the Department of Health has already testified to. The emphasis should be that realistically, we do need more time than is currently written in the bill to complete the transition, if that is what the legislature wants us to do. As to the alternative option for the system, we are looking at it also with eyes of fiscal responsibility, and you know, we would just appreciate more guidance as to what direction you'd like us to go in. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. I'll be available for any questions.
Thank you very much, Sean. We also have Sanford Chun with HTA offering comments.
Good afternoon, Chair Johansson, Vice Chair Kitagawa, members of the committee. Sanford Chun representing the HTA today. We do agree with this legislation regarding the transfer of the Daniel Kea Kaka State Veterans Home to the Oahu Regional Healthcare System and eventually to the Department of Health. However, our concern is regarding the provisions in this legislation that state that employees of the Veterans Home would not be public employees and that they would be exempt from various chapters of the Hawaii revised statute. These employees of the Veterans Home should be public employees and should be treated no differently to staff in the same job classes at other Oahu region long-term care facilities and the Department of Health, where the Oahu Regional Healthcare System will eventually be transferred. As such, we respectfully ask that the bill be amended to state that employees of the Daniel Kea Kaka State Veterans Home will be considered public employees and will not be exempt from Chapter 76, 87A, 88, and 89 of the Hawaii revised statutes. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony on this matter, and we've also submitted our written comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sanford. Members, please note that's the extent of our testifiers who indicated that they would be present on HB 1893 to testify virtually. We also have various other testimonies providing comments and support on this particular measure. Is there anyone else wishing to testify in HB 1893? Okay, seeing no further testifiers, members, any questions? Okay, seeing no questions, then we will move on to our next agenda item, HB 2515. This is relating to the Department of Health. This requires the Department of Health to establish and operate a laboratory capable of testing for diseases and air and water quality issues and other high-complexity testing. On HB 2519, we have our first testifier, Department of Health, in support.
Thank you, Chair, and Vice Chair. My name is Richard Psyke. I represent the State Laboratories Division and the Department of Health. Oh, excuse me. Okay. We stand by our written testimony in support of House Bill 2550 regarding funding for testing equipment, staffing for the proposed state laboratory facilities to be used to address the long-term monitoring effects of the drinking water, of the racial contamination of our drinking water, and expansion of our ability to respond to other environmental emergencies. Funding would also be used for specimen testing for repair drivers, for food safety, for infectious disease outbreak investigations, and for repairs to our existing laboratory facilities. Thank you, and I'll be available for questions.
Thank you very much. We also have the Board of Water Supply in support.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Kathy Mitchell, and with the Board of Water Supply, testifying for Manager-in-Chief Engineer Bernie Lau. We stand on a testimony in support. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you very much, Kathleen. Members, please note, we also have comments, support, and an individual testifying in opposition on HB 2515. On HB 2515, is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Okay, seeing no further testifiers, members, any questions on HB 2515? Okay, seeing no further, seeing no questions, then we will move on to our next agenda item. HB 2139 relating to the Residential Landlord-Tenant Code. This allows a landlord or a landlord's agent, when processing an application to rent residential property, to charge an application screening fee for the cost of requesting a tenant report or credit report for a potential tenant. It requires landlords to refund any unused amount of the application screening fee, and upon request, provide a receipt for the payment of the application screening fee. On HB 2139, we have Scott Maraschiga, the Governor's Coroner on Homelessness, in support.
Good afternoon, Chair Johansson, Vice Chair Kitagawa, and members of the committee. Scott Maraschiga, Governor's Coroner on Homelessness and Chair of the Hawaii United Agency Council on Homelessness. I'll quickly note that I prefer the consumer protections included in the original version of this bill. However, I do support the House Draft One with a suggested amendment to specify a reasonable timeframe for the landlord to refund unused application screening fees, including any unused balance. Requiring the refund of unused application screening fees will enable tenants to utilize monies to pay for rent, utilities, and other basic housing costs Hawaii's tight rental market. In addition, requiring a refund when no screening fee is conducted will disincentivize landlords from charging unnecessary fees to potential tenants who may not be seriously considered for a rental unit. Thank you for the opportunity, thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you very much, Scott. We also have Steve Levin's Office of Consumer Protection offering comments with DCCA.
Good afternoon, Steve Levin's from the Office of Consumer Protection. We stand on our written testimony indicating that we prefer the language in the original bill because it contains stronger consumer protections. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. We also have Betty Lou Larson with Catholic Charities of Hawaii offering comments. All right, not here. How about the Hawaii Realtors in opposition? Amanda Han.
Hi there. Yes, thank you so much for the opportunity to testify. I am testifying in opposition of this bill HB 2139. Thank you for your time today. I just wanted to offer some comments. You know, at our company, we do pay our staff a livable wage, and they spend a lot of their time vetting applicants. This can include anything from email correspondences, phone calls, communicating with previous landlord for references, contacting personal references, verifying employment, following up with applicants for required information that we're still waiting for, helping applicants screen their pets or assistance animals, and screening applicants. It can take anywhere from, you know, maybe if we tallied up all the time, one to two hours per applicant, and that's just between throughout, sometimes multiple days of time. It can be one of the biggest time eaters at our company, and this bill unfortunately doesn't really take into account company overhead and staff costs, like what I just mentioned. Refunding application fees would be another lengthy accounting and administrative process, which is not factored into this bill. And even if the refund would be small, and there would be really no way to factor overhead, as previously mentioned. Also, the cost of screening reports, they do continue to rise, especially with inflation. Not only do the cost of screening rise, but also just, you know, how much we're paying our employees every year, that always increases as well. Just a suggestion, because this bill does talk a lot about people that are lower income and maybe would have a hard time paying application fees, would maybe have some type of assistance program to help those people that are having a hard time with application fees, maybe with some assistance to help pay those application fees. And just one last comment. If the real true goal of this bill is for affordable rentals and a more affordable housing, really what we need to do is build more housing, because right now the inventory is so low, it's driving prices up. Thank you for the opportunity to testify, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much, Amanda. We also have late testimony from Partners in Care in support. Either Bob Worthlaw or Laura Healan. Not here, but providing testimony in support. Members, please note, there's also supportive testimony from several other additional governmental agencies on HB 2139. On HB 2139, is there anyone else wishing to testify whom I haven't called? Okay, seeing no further testifiers on HB 2139, members, any questions? Okay, seeing no questions on HB 2139, then we'll go to our next agenda item. HB 1805, this is relating to cesspools, and this establishes a temporary income tax credit until 2035 for costs of cesspool upgrade, conversion, or connection. It requires the upgrade, conversion, or connection of cesspools on sale, a real property, or within 12 months of the date of sale recognition, with certain exemptions. It appropriates funds for additional positions to monitor for cesspool upgrades, conversions, and connections. On HB 1805, we have the Department of Taxation offering comments.
Hey, good afternoon again, Chair, Vice Chair, members. Josh Michaels, Department of Tax. We'll stand on our testimony, appreciating the intent and offering comments, and happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Josh. We also have the Department of Health in support.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. Sina Prudhr with the Department of Health. We stand on our written testimony and support. Thank you for the opportunity to testify on this measure.
Thank you very much. We also have the Hawaii Realtors Association in opposition. Ken, you're right. Oh, hi, Ken.
Hi. Thank you for allowing me to submit testimony in strong opposition to HB 1805. In 2018, the legislature formed the Cesspool Conversion Working Group, of which I am a member, to address this issue of how to convert 88,000 residential cesspools by 2050. To avoid peace bill approaches to this complex problem, the working group was tasked with developing a comprehensive statewide plan and suggested legislation prior to the start of the 2023 legislature. Our work is still ongoing and not done. This bill does exactly what the legislature was trying to avoid, and that is peace bill legislation. This alone is a reason why this bill and the upcoming 29, 2195 should not move forward. On the merits, HB 1805 will create unintended consequences. Consequences is passed, this measure will all will slow down the home selling process by months and even more than a year. There are many reasons why time is of the essence when selling a home. For example, homeowners may need to sell a home because of family needs, cash to pay for loved ones nursing home, or has to move to a new job on the mainland, preparing for closure, rising interest rates, 1031 exchange deadlines, seeking property values, military deployment, or to pay for tax liens. Now, it's a practical problem. There's a shortage of these type of specialty contractors doing this type of work in many parts of the islands. For example, one member told me that Molokai, it's into contractors for this type of work in Molokai. Apparently, contractors in general are really busy. Try get a contractor to come out to do a kitchen renovation. In addition, supply chain issues make obtaining the necessary equipment and materials challenging as well. Going to a loan officer at Bu, Bank of Hawaii, these type of issues for lenders are considered what they call red flag, and they may make it more difficult for home buyers to obtain a loan. Bill also lacks clarity. For example, the bill says conversions are required for properties located 1,000 feet from a drinking water well or sensitive body of water. Well, there's no reliable TMK property map of all existing water wells. In fact, the state water wells project attempted to document water wells, but notes that a drilling permit that has been required only since 1987, so downloadable records, records prior to 1987 may not exist. Also, the digitizing effort ceased in 2012, so files for wells drilled any more recently will be absent. So in addition, there's no So in addition, there's no definition of sensitive body of water. What is that? So this makes it difficult to identify with 100% certainty to determine affected properties, potentially subjecting property owners and Realtors to lawsuits. In closing, please know that the cesspool group is still continuing to work on developing a comprehensive plan to address the issue of financing, mapping, and the shortage of licensed specialty contractors. Any legislation this session is jumping the gun and may result in unintended consequences. As one member asked me, after three years of study, please explain to me why it's a bad idea to wait until the end of this year for the final working group report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. We also have Stuart Coleman with the Waste Water Alternatives and Innovations in support.
Hi, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. My name is Stuart Coleman, and I am the Executive Director and Co-Founder of Vai Waste Water Alternatives and Innovations. And we stand in strong, strong support of this bill. And you have my testimony in hand, but just to respond to my colleague Ken's comments. You know, we've been working for three years on the cesspool conversion working group, but we're not going to solve all the answers in that group, and we are decades behind every other state that's worked in this. So, you know, to say to wait longer when we've already, you know, are kind of in last place as a state on this issue, I don't think would be wise. We've worked with a number of Realtors to address the concerns that he brought up. And, you know, there's going to be further refinement in the bill, but one of the aspects, the amendments that was added was that it would give 12 months to, once point of sale is done, to convert the cesspool to come up with a plan. And I was just talking with someone on Molokai last night, who is a contractor over there and who does cesspool conversions, and he, you know, supports this and other bills that we've been doing, because he agrees that, you know, it's way overdue. And, you know, there are a lot of health and environmental reasons that he was pointing out, you know, that are just the, you know, these cesspools are in certain areas that are really having damaging effects on the reefs, and they're, you know, places where Keke and Kipuna play. So I think it's kind of urgent that we move forward on this and continue working with Realtors to find those exemptions that, you know, we agree should be allowed for like short sales and hardships and such. Thank you for considering my testimony, and I'm available for questions. Mahalo.
Thank you, Stuart. We also have Ted Bolin with the Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition in support.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. The Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition is in strong support of this measure. Like Stuart Coleman and Ken, I, Haraki, I also serve on the cesspool conversion working group. Yes, we're still working, but that's no reason not to proceed with this bill, which is a gradual approach that only applies to people who are selling their homes. The reason to do this is that that's a time when people have money that they don't at any other time, when they can negotiate between buyer and seller as to who is going to upgrade the cesspool. And it provides an extra year, so the concerns expressed by the Realtors have additional time to do it. You close the property, then you have a year. It's not, it should not hold up sales. So I think this is a great bill. I've been in support of it and along and think that it should be adopted. Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition is concerned because cesspools put a lot of nitrogen waste into the groundwater that ends up in the ocean and causes pollution that is very harmful to coral reefs and other ocean species, marine species. So I ask the committee to please pass this bill. Thank you for the opportunity to testify, and happy to answer any questions that anyone might have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ted. We also have late testimony from Lance Owens, West Hawaii Association of Realtors in opposition.
Aloha, and thank you, Chair and Vice Chair. My name's Lance Owens. I'm President of the West Hawaii Association of Realtors, and we represent the largest association of Realtors here on the Big Island. I want to emphasize the Big Island, because I think we can all agree that this is mostly a Big Island concern, considering that 55,000 of the 80-plus thousand cesspools are located here on the Big Island. To put things in perspective, there are currently 936 homes that are actively in a real estate transactions we speak here on the Big Island. Of those 936 active transactions happening right now, 612 of them would need to be converted. If you look at my virtual screen behind every single dot that you see on that screen represents a property that needs to be converted. Those are only the 612 during the month of February that would need to be converted. I think we all want to see an answer to groundwater problems, but I don't think anybody's put it into perspective. To move on with that, this measure proposes that, that happens at the time of sale or pushes it out to up to 12 months. Using the existing numbers of 2021 home sales, there was 3,205 homes sold on the Big Island. Of these, 1,956 of them were on a cesspool, or still are in a cesspool. Add in the 610 from February, that's 2,566 homes in need of conversion by the end of the year. So by pushing this out, I don't think that's going to help. That's going to create a bigger block at the end of the time. If you want to put that a little bit better into perspective, that's 213 a month that will need to be done, or 53 a week. This is why the amendment to the bill giving the homeowner 12 months complete conversions is a bad idea. On the surface, it seems great. I'm going to share a little real-life situation with you. I was selling homes back in 2005 here in Kona, when they shut down the gang cesspools and the subdivisions, and we had to do cesspool conversion at the point of sale. Appraisers red-flagged any of the homes that were still located on the gang cesspool, and banks would not loan on the properties. So this will create a hardship, and it would not be able to be done during that time period. If we look at the backlog at the end of the year, 22,566 to be done, it's not feasible. It's impossible to be done on the Big Island. In closing, I just want to say thank you for your time, and I'm open to any questions.
Thank you very much, Lance. Members, please note that that is the extent of our testifiers who've indicated that they would be virtually testifying on HB 1805, but we do have testimony offering comments, support, and opposition on HB 1805. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on HB 1805 whom I haven't called?
Chair, is it possible that I testify on this measure? This is Matthew Geier.
Sure, please go ahead, Matthew.
Aloha. I'd like to testify in strong support. It's cesspools. It's ridiculous that we're still considering this as an option, and people are arguing that we should have, still continue to have cesspools. It's literally, I'm sorry, it's burying your poop in a hole in the ground. And it's just ridiculous. I'm sorry. I just had to say something, and we need to, we need to shut down all the cesspools. It's way overdue. Thank you.
So just to clarify for the record, Matthew Geier in support of HB 1805, correct?
Thank you, yes.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to testify on HB 1805? Okay, seeing no further testifiers, members, any questions on HB 1805? Representative Onishi.
Yes, I have a question for Department of Health. You're still there.
Yep, I'm here.
Yeah, are you guys part of the cesspool conversion working group?
Yeah, we are. We actually administer the cesspool conversion working group.
So there's testimony that says that the report is due later this year?
That's correct. The, yeah, it's like a long-range plan.
So is this, this issue of converting cesspool at point of sale part of the discussion of the working group?
Um, it hasn't really been, so we're still working on the, on plans for the cesspool working group. So this in particular hasn't been like, like discussed, you know. So it might be like, like a discussion in the, or like a discussion topic in the plan. You know, like a recommendation, but again, the, you know, we're still working on like drafting this plan.
So whether this is something that is logical or implementable, you've heard other testimony that says that the timeframe may not be possible, that it would be penalizing sellers and buyers because of the timeframe and the number of possible conversions that would have to be done, and the lack of resources, contractors, et cetera. So does it make sense? I mean, you were in support of this.
Yeah, yeah, we're, because like the Department of Health, right? I mean, you know, we actually want to like get cesspools upgraded, and that's why we actually have to support this measure, you know. I mean, any kind of like trigger, or, you know, I mean, besides of what's going to be recommended in the cesspool working plan, you know, we, we have to, we're going to support anything that will trigger like an upgrade. So, you know, if this, and you know, this, this measure, if it's passed, we're going to be doing like a lot more work, you know, on our side, but I'm willing to take on that work, because, you know, it means, you know, getting rid of cesspools. You know, because if you look at this bill and how it's written, it's permanent health. So the thing is that the way it was written, you know, it's not going to hold up a sale. However, yeah, it may impact a sale only because the buyer, the buyer of the property within the year, you know, they're actually going to be required to upgrade their cesspool, you know, to a director-approved system. So, you know, that's like a year. So what that happens is that, you know, for us, we're going to have to track. You know, so like, it's going to be sold, but we're going to actually be the ones to have to track, you know, a lot of these properties that are sold, and then we, you know, and if they don't comply, you know, we would actually have to like approach them, you know, these owners, to let them know that they're in non-compliance. You know, so, you know, in a way, that's like a lot of work. Plus too, this bill actually implements a income tax credit. So that's even additional work that we would have to do. But we're willing to do it because we know that, you know, income tax credits, you know, is, is important for a lot of these homeowners that may not be able to afford these upgrades. So, you know, either way, I mean, the Department of Health, we, we support cesspool upgrades, you know, and we also support the fact of, you know, there'd be like some kind of income tax credit to, to help with assistance.
So you guys would be willing to do this even if you didn't get four positions?
Um, well, I don't know if we'd be willing, you know, uh, but.
That's what you're testifying to. You didn't say only if we get four more positions.
Well, the thing is that we'll, we'll have a hard time implementing it if we don't have four positions.
Well, and my concern is this. So you're concerned about cesspool conversion, but you're not concerned about possible other consequences to existing homeowners or sellers and buyers. So that doesn't matter to you as long as it's being done, but only if you can get more personnel to do this. So I don't understand your priority here. You know, because, I mean, other people have testified that there would be great impact on potential sellers and buyers, and the ability for them to actually implement the requirements in this this measure.
I think there's just an impact in general, because there is the 2050 mandate, you know. So, I mean, all cesspool owners are actually impacted by that mandate. I think by having this law, if it's disclosed by the, by the Realtor, you know, they would tell, like, so, you know, if there's a transaction between the buyer and the seller, you know, the buyer will have to know if, if this measure is passed, you know, that there's a condition to this property if it's sold. You know, so, I mean, yeah, there might be an impact with the sale, you know, but I see like a lot of these cesspool owners being impacted period, because there is that 2050 mandate.
Yeah, but wasn't the whole concept of establishing the working group to prepare for that? To come up with a plan on how we're going to address these issues?
Yeah, there's a plan, but then again, though, I mean, we don't actually have to wait, you know, for these recommendations. I mean, there's like other states, you know, there's other states in the United States that actually have implemented point-of-sale like years ago. So, you know, but then those, those actually were done where they actually have to upgrade before they even sell. You know, I think the way this bill is written is that it's not going to impact the point-of-sale and, you know, install on escrow and closing, because they're not required to upgrade it before it's sold. They're actually given like a year, you know, to upgrade it. So, I mean, yeah, there's always going to be.
The buyer does not want to absorb the cost?
Um, then I guess then the, the deal would be, wouldn't, what is that, wouldn't go through?
So how can you say it won't impact the sale?
Well, you know, well, I'm not saying it would impact the sale. It's just that, you know, in that case, it probably like will.
Okay, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Representative. Members, any additional questions on HB 1805? Okay, seeing no further questions on HB 1805, then we'll move on to our next agenda item, HB 2088. This is relating to financing, and this creates the Environmental and Economic Development Revolving Loan Fund under the administration of the Hawaii Green Infrastructure Authority. It allows property owners to finance qualifying improvements through a non-ad velorem property assessment. On HB 2088, we have our first testifier, Deputy Director Chung Chang, with Department of Business and Economic Development and Tourism in support.
Good afternoon, Chair Johansson, Vice Chair Kitagawa, and members of the committee. I'm Chung Chang, Deputy Director for DED. Thank you for hearing this administration bill. DED stands on its written testimony in strong support. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Deputy Director. We also have the Department of Health in support.
Yeah, the Department of Health stands on its written testimony in support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We also have the Department of the Attorney General offering comments.
Good afternoon, Chair Johansson, Vice Chair Kitagawa. My name is Greg Kinkley. I'm Deputy Attorney General. My testimony is before you and relates to the testimony I gave earlier on the original version of the bill identifying potential contracts clause issues due to the bill's imposition of parity between the property assessed financing lien and the liens of senior mortgages. As you can see in my testimony, we do believe the HD1 improves the chances of this measure surviving constitutional attack on the contracts clause grounds. And through my abundant free time, I actually looked at some of the testimony on the website, and I noticed that today the Hawaii Bankers Association has offered, submitted testimony citing to my testimony and offering that the bill has not been made more reasonable through the HD1, because the state gets its money before a lender does. I would comment that not only have contact consent provisions and notice provisions been put in this bill to mitigate that seeming unfairness, but the concept of reasonableness is actually a term of art used in the Supreme Court precedent that governs this issue, and includes as a mitigating reasonableness factor that the program serves a valid public purpose. And here we have both environmental and equitable concerns being addressed. So it's a balancing factor that is much more appropriate to be decided by the legislature. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm available for questions and will remain for decision-making.
Thank you very much, Deputy AG Kinkley. We also have Gwen Yamamora-Lau with the Hawaii Green Infrastructure Authority in support.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. The authority stands on its written testimony and support. I also wanted to mention that I have been having very productive meetings with member, member banks of the Hawaii Bankers Association, and they are excited about the opportunity to leverage this mechanism to open new markets in lending and achieving their ESG objectives. I also wanted to caution the committee that diluting the voluntary assessment will prevent private capital from investing in these much-needed retro. From investing in these much needed retrofits. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Gwen. Uh, we also have Dean Nishina, Division of Consumer Advocacy, DCPA, offering comments.
Aloha and good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. You have my written testimony in front of you, offering comments. Uh, I am available for questions if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dean. We also have Andrew Kwan with the City and County of Honolulu offering comments.
Good afternoon, Chair. You have my test written testimony, uh, in front of you and I'll be available to answer questions if any. At this time.
Thank you very much, Andrew. We also have Rocky Mould with the Hawaii Solar Energy Association in support.
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the committee. Uh, I'm Rocky Mould with the Hawaii Solar Energy Association. Uh, we stand on our written testimony in support of this measure. Thank you.
Thank you, Rocky. We also have Juan Martinez with Pace Nation in support.
Thank you for the opportunity to testify. Pace Nation advocates for property assessment programs. Across the country because we've seen it work well across the country. We issued a report recently that shows that in Hawaii. Uh, a robust pace program will lead to the creation of thousands of construction jobs and other jobs on top of that. Prevent millions of tons of carbon emission, conserve billions of gallons of water. And then, of course, when it comes to this particular program, the cesspool conversion aspect of it is huge. Provides an option that homeowners otherwise would not have. Uh, to obtain financing at lower interest rates, longer terms means lower payments. Uh, makes, uh, this, this whole program much more feasible from the homeowner perspective. Very excited about this legislation that you're contemplating and very eager to serve as a resource if there are any questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Juan. We also have Michael Yaki with Petro's Pace Finance LLC in support.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Chair. My name is Michael Yaki with Petro's Pace Finance. I stand. Uh, by my testimony, written testimony in support of this, but just wanted to mention a little bit that. We deal with the commercial side of properties as clean energy financing. Uh, the commercial side is a little bit different than the residential in this bill. Uh, commercial has in, in the provisions in this bill has absolute lender consent. Which is whether we want to invest five dollars or five million dollars unless an existing lender on the property says, yes, we can't go forward. Nevertheless, this program is successful in 28 states and in every state since 2015. Best state statute has included the lender consent and we work in partnership with the banks and bankers associations to make these programs. Successful across the country. So thank you very much. I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Michael. We also have Genevieve Sherman with New Bean Green Capital in support.
Yes, good evening, Chair, members of the committee. Thank you for your time. We also stand on our testimony in support of HB 2088. I wanted to note that amendments were made from the prior version that do require the consent of a senior mortgage lender. Um, for any amount of financing on a commercial building. Um, that is. Um, the, the best practice all across the country. So I reiterate, uh, the, the comments just made. And in our testimony, we did note that there were further revisions that could be made to strengthen this even further. Specifically clarifying that these assessments cannot accelerate. In the event of a default or foreclosure. That's also a protection for the mortgage banks. And that is, um, that is considered best practice around the country as well. And we would encourage, um, the committee to look carefully. At those proposed amendments. Um, but with that said, the seniority of these commercial assessments, um, must be in place. To attract all the private investment into the state of Hawaii, which is so needed. Um, for all the different types of energy, water and, and resiliency improvements that would be a result of this bill. So thank you so much for your time. And I will cede. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Genevieve. We also have Stuart Coleman with Bi, Waste Water Alternatives and Innovations in support.
Hi, thank you, Chair and Vice Chair and members of the committee. Um, uh, we all stand on our testimony in strong support. We are trying to help homeowners. Um, figure out the best ways to help replace their cesspools and we've been working. Um, with, uh, the Green Infrastructure Authority, um, over the last year and other groups to try to make this happen. We think this is a very successful model in other states. So thank you for your, uh, consideration and, uh, be available for questions. Mahalo.
Thank you very much, Stuart. We also have Neil Okubashi with the Hawaii Bankers Association in opposition.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Vice Chair. And, uh. The Hawaii Bankers Association is strongly opposed to circus segments of this bill. And we are not excited about this, that one segment, which is the super league, which is like the space. Uh, loans that we had way back, I think it was in 2009 or 2010. And that bill did not make it because of the super league. The super league is basically a lien. That cuts in front of the mortgage lien that we made. To secure the mortgage loan that we made. Uh, to mainly residential, uh. Property owners, homeowners and. We see no reason why. Uh, I'll call it DBED because they're the big proponents of, of this measure. We see no reason why DBED has to cut in front of us. And get paid first. I mean, we made the law, we should get paid first. We recognize that real property assessments go before all of us. That's been always the case. But we make a loan, we do what's called a loan to value assessment. Which is the amount of the loan versus the amount of the value of the house, usually the sales price. So let's say it's a $300,000 value, we'll make probably a loan of 80%. That's standard. So that's an 80% loan to value. Now, if you can. Borrow 20%. On this pace like loan or DBED loan without a consent. Then the loan to value jumps to 100%. And should there be any foreclosure, we lose because in a foreclosure, you never get full value. When you sell the property at foreclosure. So I would disagree with the Attorney General's comment. About certain things that we made it reasonable. For example, that's how having an escrow account. The escrow account. Only helps if the homeowner borrower is paying into the escrow account. But it doesn't help when he's not paying and then you have the foreclosure and that's when. The bank that was demoted to second place will suffer and lose. I will say that. It's going to be very difficult. To make loans. If there is a. A lien on the property to satisfy this DBED loan. Because there'll be a lot of obstacles, uh, such as loan to value, such as the ability to repay. And those are the things that we are required to do. So we have, uh, proposed language and, and it's in our testimony. To delete the super league and treat it like a regular law, which it should be. We don't have an objection to the law.
Neil, if you can start to summarize.
All right, thanks. Uh, so. One last question thing I have is that the definition of qualified improvements is a little vague, not assess boost, but everything else. That should be worked on. Thank you for this opportunity to testify. If you have any questions, I'll be here.
Thank you very much, Neil. Uh, on HB 2088, we also have late testimony from the Tax Foundation of Hawaii offering comments.
Thank you, Chair and members. Tom Yamachika from Tax Foundation. Uh, we've, uh, we, we do note that this is. Um, basically a variant of the PACE program that has been. Uh, talked about by Mr. Okubashi and others, uh, and is recognized by the US Department of Energy. Uh, and what we've attempted to do is summarize the pros and cons in our testimony. Uh, we'd have been happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Tom. We also have Stephanie Sakamoto with the Hawaii Credit Union League in opposition.
Aloha, Chair, members of the committee. Stephanie Sakamoto on behalf of the Hawaii Credit Union League will stand on our testimony in opposition. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, members, please note that's the extent of our testifiers indicating that they would be testifying virtually, but we do have. On this measure. Additional. Testimonies offering comments and support on HB 2088. Is there anyone else wishing to testify in HB 2088? Okay, seeing no further testifiers. Members, any questions on HB 2088?
Sure.
Representative Onishi.
Yeah, for DBED. Is that true?
Yes, I do have Gwenda who is our subject matter expert on this matter. So she can also, um. Help answer your questions.
My question is. If this is such a good deal and you expect. The borrower, borrower. Borrower to repay. Why are you superseding the mortgage in terms of, you know, foreclosure?
Chung, if you don't mind, I'll, I'll get that.
Go ahead, Gwen.
Yeah, um, Rep. Nishi, that's a very good question. So this is a property voluntary, uh, assessment that the property owner. Uh, volunteers to get through a property assessed loan. The, the mech, the repayment mechanism on, on the real property tax is what opens the new markets for. For lenders to loan where they might not have loaned before. Um, it, it also is a risk mitigator. So. Again, the, the pricing, you know, many banks, um, do risk-based pricing. So as risks decrease. Uh, uh, the pricing should decrease accordingly. Um, the property assess, uh, as was mentioned actually before that. The property assessed type of financing allows for typically a longer term. You know, within the bill, there is a lot of guardrails. Um, the, the bill does say that for residential and commercial. There needs to be repayment ability that the property assessed lender will determine. Um, so therefore, if the banks are participating as a property assessed lender, they will do their underwriting and they will determine the, the ability to repay. Uh, in as far as the executive director's comments from the Hawaii Banks Association, you know, one of the, and it's in the bill, one of the. Uh, guardrails is any residential property, uh, property owner who wants to get a property assessed loan. Will notify their more first mortgage lender. Um, and as I've been talking to the banks. Um, for the first mortgage lender, what they will do is they will increase the escrows to take care of the property taxes so that it doesn't cause any. Additional risks to, to their first mortgage loan. Um, so that takes care of that risk.
So how long would they be increasing the, um. The escrow account?
You know, so it would be depending on the, um, path lenders', uh, loan terms. So in the, in the. In the, uh, bill, it says that the, uh, the term of the loan can be as long as. The, uh, life of the system, whatever's being installed. However, within that, that's the, that's the guidelines. Within that, a path lender could choose to go a little bit shorter than that. They cannot go longer than that. So it depends on the terms and the structure of the, um, uh, property assessed lenders.
So how would the borrower fund the escrow if it's over a 10-year period? But say in five years they go bankrupt.
So the, the, that's why it's important for the, um, uh, the amendments that I had included and I think Genevieve had also mentioned. That it doesn't accelerate. So if, if there is a situation where the, the, there is a foreclosure, what we don't want to do is we don't want to accelerate. The, the repayment of the, uh, property assessed loan. It would, it would transfer from property owner to property owner.
But the bank's ability. To get money back from their original mortgage. Would, that would not be transferred to the next property.
No, but see, be- because we don't, so let's say there is a $30,000 cesspool loan on the property, right? We are seeing that any condition of foreclosure or delinquencies cannot accelerate it, meaning that. We are not going to get that $30,000 back. So what is just, so let's say, um, $500, I'm just making it up, is. Delinquent. That's what will get repaid, not the, the remaining balance. And that protects the lenders, the first mortgage lenders. We're not accelerating the entire payment of that in order to protect the first mortgage lenders.
So again, my question is, why do you guys supersede the mortgage there? If that's your, if that's your. Safeguard for yourselves. Why are you superseding the mortgage, the original mortgage?
Because it's, it, because it's a voluntary property tax on it. And, um. Rep. Nishi, without that, um, as, as I've mentioned, as Genevieve had mentioned. The private capital is not going to help invest in these, these types of retrofits.
Okay, if that's the case, why are we putting 25 million in the fund initially? Is that intended to be paid back to the state?
Yeah, so the 25 million is, um, largely for implementation costs. So I think if you, if you refer to. Um, Director Andy Kwan's, um, uh, testimony, you know, there is going to be. Uh, programming costs for the, uh, the billing systems of the counties. Um, if four counties opt in, it's going to be there for their billing systems as well as mine to have the electronic feed of the, um. The loans, uh, talking to each other instead of doing a manual. Whatever is remaining outside of the implementation costs, uh, I'm estimating maybe 10 million, 15 million at most. Will be for us to, uh, kickstart this program, whether it's by providing credit enhancements for the property assessed lenders. To get comfortable with it, or it might be that we, the authority financed those borrowers who that the, the path lenders are not comfortable financing. At all so that we can help them convert and retrofit.
So this whole program really is to guarantee potential investors that they're going to get their money back.
It's not to guarantee, but it is to attract them. It's, it, because you know, just the cesspools itself. Uh, the, the, it's estimated to be 1.3 billion to 1.7 billion to, to convert all of the cesspools into the septic system. Or to the, the, the county sewer system. 25 million cannot do that, cannot do it alone. We need to attract private capital.
Oh, I fully understand, but the only way you can attract it is you have to guarantee their payback.
It's not guaranteed, but that's why the property assessment lien is very important.
I mean, if you're primary to any other lien. I mean, unless the property's worth zero, you're going to get paid back.
Thank you, Representative. Members, any additional questions on HB 2088? Um, if there are no other questions, then maybe I'll ask one. And Gwen, if you can indulge the committee here, I think just because this is a fairly complex bill. Uh, you know, as teased out, um, very well by Representative Onishi, I think it might be helpful for the public as well as. Uh, the CPC committee to tease out just sort of, whether it's a hypothetical example or how this process works. Just because I think that makes it more accessible. So say whether it's a, you know, to take care of a cesspool problem or something else. From the standpoint of perhaps teasing out the timeline, um, of, you know, interaction between. The consumer, um, and the borrower as well as financial institutions and then how they ultimately. Might leverage the system to remedy whatever their issue might be, infrastructure wise.
Um, in as far as the timing, so you know, should this bill get passed, there's, I'm going to be working on two tracks. One track is working with the counties, um, should they opt in to, um, get their billing systems up and running. That's more, I think, for the residential side because we expect more volume there. Um, the other track will be working with the lenders. Um, the, uh, members of the Hawaii Bankers Association as well as credit unions, if they are interested in, in designing a property assessed program. That, that fits the needs of everyone. And so it's, what I envision is having the guidelines and within the guidelines. Every path lender, participating path lender can have more stringent guidelines if they want to within what they are comfortable lending. Um, but they all will need to meet the guidelines of the overarching, um, property assessed financing program. Uh, so as far as timing, that's a little bit hard to say. Um, I think based on, um, feedback from the, uh. Uh, Pace Nation, uh, professionals on the mainland who has been doing these types of loans. Um, the commercial will typically come ahead of the residential side just because, you know, there's so many more residential and we probably want to have. and we probably want to have the, the programming done for the buildings of the property tax office. Commercials, it will be larger, probably larger, and probably less volume. And so perhaps we might be able to start that first, followed by the residential.
Okay, thank you, Gwen.
You're welcome.
Is Michael Yaki still here?
Hey, I'm Mr. Chair.
Maybe if you could elaborate on what Gwen was saying, it just, I think it helps, whether it's for me or some of the other members, makes it a little bit more digestible, exactly what this means potentially to the consumer or, you know, on an individual level or even on a commercial level, how they access this particular program.
Sure. And let me, let me start off by saying that the reason for the priority lien, the property tax, is because PACE was created to, it's in sort of mimic public finance and to make it available to the individual rather than to the group. Usually you do a bond and goes through an entire group of people or to investor, PACE is to an individual. But by being able to mimic the property, the public finance system by making it part of the property tax system, we can access lower interest money at longer terms, which reduces cash flow impact to any consumer or to a commercial property owner, in my case. And because it acts like a public, like a property tax, you don't bill your tax, you don't get a tax for nineteen, for twenty-two, and then have to, and then if you're delinquent, you have to pay your taxes from twenty-twenty-three to twenty, to twenty-thirty. It's just each year. And that's a thing that, that, that protects, as Gwen said, it protects anyone who has an interest in the property because the only delinquency in front of them is not the entire amount, but just that particular year's taxes. But it is important for it to be there because the capital markets out there, the ones that, the same ones that the banks access, banks access and others, and that local governments access, look at this and make it, make it, make a, make a judgment accordingly that the kind of, the kind of money available, lower interest and longer term will work. Now, the bill as it stands right now has sort of two different components. As Gwen said, there's the residential, and that's the one that has the income criteria, the ability to pay provisions in there. The commercial one has reasonable, under, commercial underwriting, but also has with it the, as I said in my testimony, the absolute lender consent provision. There is no way that this lien, the super lien goes on the property unless anyone who's currently on the property says yes. The residential works differently. It has to work differently because the amounts are much lower because you're dealing with, dealing, because you're dealing with, with homeowners who are in a different position than, say, Ala Moana or the Royal Hawaiian Hotel, just for example. They're very, very different. They're sophisticated. They have other creditors and lenders in there. We are part of a, usually a larger amount of financing as being used to rehabilitate a property, and we finance the ones that are, that are authorized by your law, the energy efficiency and other things like that. So we, we have a very specific purpose. We have a very specific benefit that we do. I mean, we've never done cesspools, but we do, are starting to do in different states, depending on their particular public interest. We do hurricanes in Florida. We do flooding in, in parts of the Midwest. We do seismic resiliency on the Pacific coast of California, Washington, and Oregon. And if, and if cesspools are going to be part of the issue for commercial properties here, it's something that we, we can deal with as well. But it will be something where, again, whether it's five dollars or five million dollars, a whoever is a lender on the property, whether it's a bank located in Hawaii or, or an institutional investor or a mainland bank, they will have to say yes in order to make it, to make it happen.
Thank you, Michael. Members, any additional questions?
Chair.
Representative Onishi. Sure.
I'm Mr. Yaki.
Yes, sir.
So you're basically talking about only commercial lending, right?
Yes.
So can I ask your opinion? Do you think, what, what is riskier, commercial or residential?
I don't want to, I understand. I, I think, I, I don't want to get into any evaluation of risk. I only talk about commercial. And I can say this, that, that commercial has expanded into twenty, its programs in twenty-eight states across this country. Most recently, statutes have been enacted in states as diverse as the states of Washington and the state of Tennessee. Nevada just did theirs. It is done because is a form of financing that commercial property owners find very attractive because the lower interest and the longer term has an impact on their cash flow. So if you're running a hotel, if you're running an office, if you're running retail, cash flow means, means something to you. And the lower payments over a longer term, because you amortize it out over a longer term, that does, of the two thousand odd financings of commercial pace financed across this country of about two billion dollars. And we recently just, our company just did one for eighty-nine million dollars on Wall Street in Manhattan. But even during this, these rather difficult times during the pandemic, there have been no defaults or foreclosures of commercial property, of commercial properties. And the answer, and the reason for that is pretty simple. And I'm sure that, that Neil would acknowledge this, which is that whoever a lender is, whether you're first position, second position, if you're parity, what have you, you want to protect your investment in the property. And in, in commercial pace, we, again, are the only exposure to a senior lender, who, by the way, must have consented for us to jump in front of them, is that single-year assessment if there, if there's a delinquency. And usually, you know, you can try and, you can work things out, or you, or someone will come in and pay that off in order to protect their interest in the property. So there's, the overall risk is no more different than the risk of any commercial lending across the country. They, these are all decisions that they make, and these are all decisions that go into the evaluation of whether a commercial pace, commercial pace on a property is going to be sound or risky. And again, and it can just be philosophy. If, 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 if Neil says, well, I just don't want pace anywhere on my property, no matter how good, no matter what the benefit is, no matter what the economic return will be to my, to my company, I just don't want that, they have the right to say no, and it doesn't happen. But luckily, there are a lot of property owners out there, a lot of developers, a lot of banks who we partner with, who understand how PACE works to lower operating costs, how it works to increase, lower, lower cash, increase cash flow to a company, how the savings that it generates from, whether it's solar, whether it's water, whether it's, whether it's, whether it's insurance premiums, because you make something more resilient against a hurricane, all those things work together to make a property work better. Now, on the residential side, what you're doing is you're also lowering risk as well. You're lowering risk to, to, to the, to, to your community in terms of, in this case, the cesspools and what it will mean to the environment, what it means to environmental health. But I, I can't, I can't speak for what the risk is for residential, but I can speak to you what the risk is for commercial. And the evidence out there in, across this country is exceedingly low and certainly no, no riskier than any other commercial lending product out there, except that it brings with it the public benefits and the savings and the, the environmental and public policy purposes that you seek to achieve by creating this kind of program.
Did I just hear you correctly? You said there's no commercial risk?
No, I said there's, I didn't say there's no commercial. I said it is no greater commercial risk than in any other sort of commercial financing. And in many ways, if you, if you think about the fact that this, the PACE loan does not accelerate, as Gwen said.
Okay, but that's to that loan, correct?
Yes.
But what about the existing loan?
The existing, the existing loan has the ability to accelerate, for, I mean, for example, if, if they're making their PACE payments, but they're not making their mortgage, their mortgage payments, they have the right to foreclose and accelerate the entire amount that they, that they're owed to the bank, to them. On a PACE loan, if they're delinquent on the PACE, it's only that year's assessment. So if we lent five million dollars to, to a building in Waikiki, and the annual payment is a hundred thousand dollars, and they were delinquent on that, the only risk to every lender on that property is a hundred thousand dollars. Because that's, that's all that is at risk during a foreclosure is that amount of money. It's not the five million. Because remember, the property's benefited from this. It's not like you're giving them a loan to just buy it. This is a, this is, this is money designed to create fixture, fixed improvements to the property.
No, I fully understand that, but that hundred thousand dollars is taken out first, right? And the rest, the rest of the five million dollars goes with the property.
It, it, it stays with the property, but it is, but the property, as you, but the property has been benefited by, I mean, one of.
I fully understand the public benefit, but.
No, 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 there's a, there's a, there's a benefit to that building, to that building. I'm sorry, there's a benefit to that building. So that building's value has increased. This is why commercial.
But does the mortgager recoup their original loan is my question?
I would, look, given, given, I can't, commercial pace has been around for about ten years. And we, like I said, we've done about two thousand or so across this country. And we have had, we have had sales of these properties.
I'm not talking about commercial property. I'm talking about the residential property.
Yeah, but, but with all due respect, I can't, I cannot answer, I do not, I do not practice residential. I cannot answer for that.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Thanks for the reway.
Sure. Thank you, Representative. Members, any other questions on HB twenty eighty-eight? Okay, seeing no further questions, then we'll move on to our next agenda item, HB twenty-one ninety-five. This is relating to cesspools. This establishes a cesspool compliance pilot grant project to assist low and moderate income property owners, including lessees on Hawaiian homelands, with the cost of upgrading, converting, or connecting a cesspool. It applies to cesspools identified as failing by the Department of Health. On HB twenty-one ninety-five, we have our first testifier, Department of Health, in support.
The department stands on our written testimony and support. Thank you for the opportunity to testify on this measure.
Thank you very much. We also have Ken Hiraki with the Hawaii Realtors Association in opposition.
I understand our written testimony, and just to say, you know, consistently we're opposing anything having to do with cesspool conversions because the working group that has been doing work for the last three years has not completed its final report. It's to the end of this year. And so we believe that all measures related to this should wait so we can develop a comprehensive plan and present it to the legislature and not do piecemeal legislation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. We also have Stuart Coleman with BI in support.
Hi, yes, thank you, Chair, Vice Chairs. I would just say that we stand in strong support of this bill. And as I mentioned earlier, we desperately need to move forward with this issue because we are decades behind. And just to remind her, I think all of you know this, but fifty-three million gallons a day of untreated sewage are discharged into our groundwaters, and it's not only affected the, the health of our near-shore waters, but also our drinking water, and there documented cases of that. So our biggest concern is to work with homeowners and to help them any way we can with this, especially low-income and moderate-income folks. And so we need to, I think, move ahead with grant programs like this. And I'll just add as a final note, this is a historic moment. We have an infrastructure bill that was passed, the largest of its kind in the country's history, and wastewater in particular was called out. If we don't show action on this, we might not be able to access a lot of these funds because many of them are competitive. So we need to move forward so that we can access this, bring this federal funding into the state, create thousands of jobs. And these are green jobs that will be around for a long time and improve our drinking water and coastal waters. Mahalo for your consideration.
Thank you very much, Stuart. We also have Ted Boland with the Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition in support.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. The Hawaii Reef and Ocean Coalition stands on its written testimony in strong support. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Members, please note on HB twenty-one ninety-five, we have additional testimony prepared in support and some opposition on this measure. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on HB twenty-one ninety-five? Okay, seeing no further testifiers on HB twenty-one ninety-five, members, any questions? Okay, seeing no questions, then we'll move on to our last agenda item, HB twenty-nine D relating to zero emission transportation. This establishes a zero emission vehicle rebate program within the Public Utilities Commission to enable low and moderate income families greater access to zero emission vehicles by providing a rebate on a point-of-sale purchase price of zero emission vehicles. On HB twenty-nine D, we have Deputy Director Chung Chang with DBED in support.
Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, in, in, and you know, we stand in a strong support, and this is an administration bill, so thank you for hearing, hearing this measure. Mahalo.
Thank you. We also have Scott Glenn, Hawaii State Energy Office, in support.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, and committee. Thank you for scheduling this administration bill. You have our written testimony, and I'd like to offer some additional thoughts. Low and moderate income families spend a higher proportion of their income on transportation. According to the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics, Honolulu households spend about fourteen percent of their budget on transportation. We can logically expect that to be higher for other islands. Of the almost eight thousand dollars in annual transportation expenditures in Honolulu, about ninety percent of that was spent on buying and maintaining private vehicles. And according to the U.S. Department of Transportation, households in the bottom fifth spend almost thirty percent of their after-tax income on transportation. And we're all seeing in the headlines about rising gas prices. The price of oil is closing in on one hundred dollars, and that means these other costs will be going up as well. We'd all like to find a way to help working families, including those raising concerns about this bill, and learn the lesson of the solar revolution, where many feel that the benefits of that mainly went to families that are better off. Second, to switching to mass transit and walking, the best way to not have to worry about the price at the pump is to switch to an electric vehicle, whether it's an automobile, a motorcycle, a scooter, or a neighborhood vehicle. Who qualifies as low and moderate income shifts regularly, and the electric vehicle market is very dynamic? HB twenty-nine D is designed to be flexible to these changing market conditions. As an analogy, I'd like to reference for the committee's consideration that think of the language in this bill as hard coding, as a difference between hard coding program features into statute versus more dynamic coding, which allows for a more flexible program. We've learned about this from the EV charging infrastructure rebate program that already exists, that this approach works very well and can work better, such as this committee's consideration yesterday for HB eighteen eleven, which was passed out with non-substantive amendments to adjust the EV charging rebate program to be more flexible and dynamic in its implementation. Based on comments raised at the hearing before the Energy and Environmental Protection Committee, we proposed in our written testimony amendments that would address the difference between automobile dealers and other sellers of forms of electric vehicles. We think this addresses the concerns raised, although are also open to other potential language. And finally, I'd just like to note that there are different ways to calculate affordability, low and moderate income, which are also addressed in the PUC sockets and various matters that it has. And finally, that the effect of a working group would be achieved through the PUC process with the added benefit of being able to move directly into implementing the program rather than delaying for another year for helping low and moderate income families get a rebate to help them control their costs of living here and having a cleaner lifestyle. So thank you again, committee, for the opportunity to comment and testify on this administration bill.
Thanks so much, Scott. Next, we have the Hawaii Public Utilities Commission in support.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members. The PUC stands on its written testimony in support. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have. Thank you. Next, we have the Hawaii Climate Change Commission in support.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. We'd like to stand on our testimony and support. Mahalo.
Thank you, Leah. Next, we have Ulupono Initiative in support.
Good afternoon, Chair Johansson, Vice Chair Kitagawa, members of the committee. Micah Munikonton on behalf of the Ulupono Initiative will stand on our testimony in support of this measure. Thank you.
Thank you, Micah. Next up, we have Climate Protectors Hawaii in support.
Stand on written testimony. Thank you very much, Chair, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Ted. Next up, we have Hawaiian Electric in support.
Good afternoon, Vice Chair Kitagawa and committee members. My name is June Chi, testifying on behalf of Hawaiian Electric. We stand on our written testimony in strong support of this measure. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you, June. Next up, we have the Alliance for Automotive Innovation in support.
Good afternoon, Vice Chair, Chair, members of the committee, Tiffany Yajima for the Alliance for Automotive Innovation. We stand in our written testimony in support of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Tiffany. Next up, we have the Hawaii Auto Dealers Association in opposition.
Thank you, Chair Johansson, Vice Chair Kitagawa, and members of the committee. I'm David Rolf, representing the Hawaii Automobile Dealers Association. HADAS supports the transition to electric vehicles and the attempt to address equity issues in electric vehicle purchases, but some of the language contained in HB 2090, HD1, are very concerning to auto dealers and should be to everyone. And that's why we have not supported the HD1 version of this. In fact, when we came out initially supporting the intent of this idea, when we heard the governor was proposing this, we are strongly in favor of the intent of the, intent of the transition. But I want to be very clear that we're, we're not supporting this. And the reason for that are, the definitions are inconsistent with chapter 437, which is the licensing law that relates to motor vehicles. And the administrative process in this is very vague. The bill arguably may permit people to purchase vehicles out of state, producing no G E T for the state of Hawaii. Then they would ship those vehicles to Hawaii and then qualify for the rebate. This language in it that refers to vehicle dealer and then adds the, the term appropriate entity is totally incorrect. That's why it said would, might allow purchases out of state. We've suggested if this bill is to move forward, and it's so flawed, I'll explain some of the other things on it. HADAS concerned with that language, with that appropriate entity language is that we would ask for this amendment, that purchases of motor vehicles made under the provisions of the Zero Emission Vehicle Rebate Program by qualifying Hawaii residents or qualifying Hawaii nonprofit organizations should be from a new motor vehicle dealer or used vehicle dealer as defined in section 43711. So we have, we've put that provision asking for the amendment if this is to move forward. Here, here is some of the problem. The bill needs to define so many things. It has a vague reference to low and moderate income purchasers. Now Scott just mentioned the bottom 20%, but moderate income, as we have heard, can be as much as 400% of the poverty level, which would be 126, 127,680 for a family of four. So that, that has to be taken into consideration that that family, which may have bought an electric vehicle anyway, now all of a sudden gets a very large rebate. Well, how, how much is this rebate? Well, it's for zero emission vehicles only, but there's no definition of zero emission vehicle. I, I looked that up and there's seven different definitions that's used all around the country. One of them was, a zero emission vehicle means a battery electric vehicle, plug-in hybrid electric vehicle, and hydrogen fuel cell electric vehicle. Well, I, I don't think that that's what has been in mind here. I think the, the plug-in hybrid electric vehicle is not included. In Oregon, it is, and many other states that this supposedly is based on. So we had a question of how can you leave that ill-defined? There's a need to define qualifying vehicles. Let's just say that the original thinking here, we, we had some discussions, that it might be a, a 50,000 MSR vehicle, MSRP vehicle. You'd have to put the word original in there because used is also applied here. And there is no MSRP on a used vehicle, so you'd have to go back to the original. What, let me show you what happens if you get a $10,000 rebate, which is, it could be this high in this bill, on a $50,000 vehicle. You may have a situation where someone would buy a $50,000 vehicle, get a $10,000 rebate.
Dave, if you can start to summarize, please.
That's $17,500. And then nowadays, since we've heard so much from the Board of Realtors, cars, because of the chip shortage, are actually appreciating. And it's just like the real estate situation. You can sometimes sell a car for more than you bought it for. So you could get money, $17,500, buy a $50,000 car, sell it for that or more in two years, and walk away with $17,500 if you earn $126,000 as a family of four. There's something just wrong when you don't fill in all the blanks and you leave everything in this vague reference. Also, it refers to used vehicles and with their warranties on them. It says if you have less than 24 months left on the warranty, that, you know, it wouldn't qualify. Well, most vehicles are sold with a free year, 36 mile. That means that after one year, the vehicles don't qualify their use. Just in conclusion, there are so many questions. There are so many vague references here. It wasn't like Oregon's at all, which is all in statute, and it's not like HB 11, which has $35,000 for a DC fast charger. It has dollar amounts in the bill. So in conclusion, there are so many questions and so many concerns raised about HB 2030, HD1. And because those concerns were not changed in the HD1 draft, HADAS remains strongly opposed to something that just is going to be a square peg trying to jam into a round hole. We believe that working together on the larger question of the transition to renewable fuel vehicles involves issues that can all be resolved. So we appreciate the opportunity to testify expressing our deep concerns about this bill's vague language and the circumvention of the motor vehicle licensing laws and the many other vague terms in this bill. And that's why we request the establishment of a ground transportation working group that these questions can be addressed on the interim before next year's session. And we testified to that on Senate side. They're setting up a working group. We just think that's the wise way to go. Way too many questions. We are strongly opposed. And thank you for the chance.
Thank you, Dave. We also have Matthew Geier in support.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Congratulations on making it to the end of a long agenda. So I really appreciate all that you folks are doing for the environment, for making the world a better place. And this bill is doing just that. It's helping low-income families, mid, moderate-income families be able to participate in the EV revolution. And one of the things we all know about EVs is they're a little pricey, so it's, it's harder for low-income families to take advantage of that. But a lot of folks don't realize that the maintenance costs on EVs is a lot lower than a gas car. So it is a lot cheaper to operate a battery-powered vehicle. So low-income families are going to get a win, a double win from this. And our environment's going to get a win from this. So I really appreciate you hearing and supporting this measure.
Thank you very much, Matthew. Do we have the Department of Transportation? No, they offered late testimony in support. Members, please note that we have supportive testimonies, various individuals and organizations as well on this measure HB 2090. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on HB 2090? Okay, seeing no further testifiers. Members, any questions?
Sure.
Representative Onishi.
Yeah, for DBED, I have a question. How much funds are expected to be generated by the five cents tax on the barrel going into this fund?
Representative Onishi, thank you for your question. I'm going to defer to Scott Glenn to answer that question.
Okay, thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Representative, the five cents that was proposed in the initial draft is, I think, expected to generate about $1.2 million annually.
Yeah, my question is, so in an expenditure from the fund, why is there a million-dollar cap on it? Well, it's not an expenditure cap. It is, anything raised over a million dollars goes into the general fund. Why was that put in?
I, I believe that's a reference to the existing statute. Perhaps I could ask the Public Utilities Commission to comment on how their special fund is set up?
Yes, thank you, Scott. So you're correct. That is the existing statute. The Public Utilities Commission special fund is subject to a $1 million ceiling. So at the end of each fiscal year, any surplus over that amount is rolled into the general fund. So what's being added in this is actually exempting the funds from this program from that ceiling so that those funds aren't going to be swept back to the general fund, but they can persist through each fiscal year.
Oh, okay. Where, where is that, okay, Dave? That word?
On page 13, lines three to eight.
Okay, it doesn't apply to the subaccount.
No, it would be, it would be exempting those.
So my other question is, so program, the rebate for the program would be set annually by the program administrator. Why was that put into this measure instead of it being a fix rebate based on some kind of income parameter? It would seem that this puts, gives whoever the program administrator a lot of leeway in determining who would be able to get these benefits.
Yes, thank you, Representative. As I noted in my testimony, that's an intentional design feature as a lesson learned from the EV charging rebate, EV charging system rebate, that the ability to set it is reflective that this market changes quickly. There's a lot of technology coming on and figuring out the right rebate amount is dynamic. I'd also just like to note, this isn't only electric cars. We are, the bill does include motorcycles, mopeds, and other forms of things known as micro-mobility, like those golf carts you see around Kailua, with the idea that we're trying to extend the reach of electric vehicles to all levels. And while not every low-income family might be looking in the market to buy a car, there are many that rely on mopeds or motorcycles or other forms of, of smaller forms of transportation that could also benefit from a rebate and help them participate in this.
I guess my problem is that this program, if it's not establishing some statute, doesn't have legislative oversight. So whether it's good or bad, or whether it's working or not worked, but it, no, because we're not establishing the parameters for which this this program would be administered by. So I just have a problem that I think that's maybe a little bit too much leeway in, in regards to what income levels and the amount of the rebates and equally about, you know, all the different types of vehicles that are available for the rebates. So just wanted to make that point. Thank you, Chair.
Chair, may I offer a comment?
If, if the representative.
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
Thank you, Representative. I just wanted to note that the Public Utilities Commission process for establishing these kinds of programs is a public docketed process that anyone can see and participate or follow. Perhaps the Public Utilities Commission could speak more about how they do that. But it is not a invisible go-away, set up a program, and suddenly there's something out there. But there's actually a formal process and involves the Public Utilities Commission in turn reporting to the legislature on their activities. So there is a level of visibility and oversight exerted by the legislature.
Yeah, if the public utilities would like to comment, that's fine.
Representative, all that I would add is I think that there's value in having some flexibility to respond. It's hard to predict exactly what response we'll get from different income groups, different graphical areas. So I think beneficial to have the discretion to set different rebate amounts and things like that. And I think that through the EV charging system rebate program, we've seen that a bit as it's expanded eligibility. You know, you want to be able to pull the right levers to make the best use of the funds. So yeah, that's all I'll, all I'll say on that is that I think it's valuable to be able to have a somewhat flexible and responsive program to use the funds to their best use.
So my question would be, how would the Public Utilities Commission report this program to the legislature for evaluation?
As Scott mentioned, they're publicly docketed processes. We could also report to the legislature on the special fund. We already do some reporting on that front. But the, the documentation is public and there's opportunities to submit public comments and such. But we'd be working with Hawaii Energy in cooperation to set the appropriate rebate amounts and make sure that the program is running well.
So what you're saying is that if the program, the, the parameters of the program get changed, it would be a docket I guess, process?
I'm not 100% sure, but I believe so. As the bill's written, the, the rebates could be adjusted annually. So that would be documented and, you know, public information so that people applying for the rebates know what they're applying for and how the system is set up.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Representative. Representative Har.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chief Energy Officer Scott Glenn. Good afternoon. Nice to see you. Thank you for being here and for testifying. And I think this is a very well-intended measure, but we all know the devil's in the details. So you heard the testimony from the Hawaii Automobilers, Automobile Dealers Association. And I think that they do raise some reasonable concerns, and I'd like to go through them with you because I think, you know, clearly the HD1 is somewhat of the issue. First and foremost, they do talk about the fact that, you know, and I think, again, in your verbal testimony, you had talked about the fact we are trying to help so, some of those who are economically challenged so that they, and I've talked about this with you, about how people want to do the right thing, but, you know, financially, they're precluded from doing so. And so that's why I like this bill. But again, we need to be able to go through some of these issues. So, you know, again, the first thing that Mr. Rolf had testified to is there's this, the, the bill's vague reference to low and moderate income purchasers. I think that's definitely something, you know, and I, I'm sure you guys from the DBED side, there's got to be some kind of number. And I understand that, again, that term is going to be fluid, so putting it in statute may not be the best thing to do because it's going to change yearly, you know, what is defined. It's the same thing with AMI, area median income. But how do we address that issue? Because again, what is, is that the intention of, if this bill were to pass, you guys would put it in admin rules? But then admin rules would have to be going out to, you know what I mean? So I'm just trying to understand, what is the definition then? What is, what is your folks' definition of low income to, low to income, excuse me, low to moderate income purchasers?
Thank you, Representative Har. So on that point, we, we did not propose a specific definition in statute as, as raised by us and, and the automobile dealers. We looked at the Public Utilities Commission to see what do they use in their dockets for LMI. So there's a variety of standards that are used. For example, the community-based renewable energy docket has different criteria. One of them is being a household with income equal to or less than those established by HUD for LMI. There's another one that they use kind of a proxy. So it's being in LIHE, being eligible for SNAP, for MedQuest, for other types of programs that help low and moderate income families. And then they also have another criterion for being in a zip code. And then they also have another criterion for being in a zip code identified as primarily low and moderate income. So there's a, there's a variety of ways to define it. And we thought that given the different markets for the rebates that are being proposed, that it would make more sense to allow that to be flushed out more fully through a docket at the PUC where if we're looking at what is the LMI threshold for an electric car buyer versus an LMI threshold for someone looking for a moped? You know, is what is, what is the right way to characterize that? And it's going to, going to change over time. So we thought having this public PUC process where details can be hashed out would be the more appropriate way to do that.
Thank you for that explanation, Mr. Glenn. Okay, so another contention from the Automobile Association has to do with the fact that the bill as currently written is inconsistent with HRS Chapter 437, which deals with licensing. And arguably now this bill would permit people to purchase vehicles out of state. Therefore, we would miss our opportunity collecting the G E T. These dealers would then be able to ship their cars here. And these, the purchasers of these vehicles would now qualify for the rebate. I don't, I want to think that that's, I mean, this must be an unintended consequence. This is not something the administration would support, would be circumventing collection of the general excise tax.
That's a very good point. And when this, this issue was raised at the Committee on Energy and Environmental Protection, we agreed that that was a concern to be addressed. And I believe the automobile dealers raised some language that they proposed for addressing it. We also submitted some language in our testimony for addressing it. I haven't had a chance to compare the two closely yet.
Okay.
But for our approach, we proposed just pulling them out and separating them just using the existing statutory definition for automobile dealers, new and used, and then totally separating out how we handle sellers of other types of electric vehicles, mopeds, motorcycles, et cetera, and letting, I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Glenn, sorry.
And the reason that we felt there was a need to distinguish that is because right now you can buy mopeds and motorcycles and things from different ways. And we expect that market to change too. Will electric mopeds be purchasable from Target in the future? We don't, we don't know. And so we thought that level of flexibility would be appropriate for those smaller forms of transportation. But we did want to acknowledge the dealer's concern in terms of defining them and not muddying their definition that they operate under in their HRS.
Okay, so then I want to be clear. So the administration stand, how we get there would be to ensure that any purchasers, and let's just talk about the EVs at this point. Let's only talk about electric vehicles, not mopeds and other forms of transportation. If we're talking solely about EVs, then it would be, the administration would be supportive of some type of language or amendment in this measure that would ensure that the vehicles were purchased here locally in Hawaii from our dealers here to ensure that the collection of the general excise tax occurs, correct?
I want to say generally correct. I don't know if there are wrinkles or caveats in there that I'm unaware of that I would just want to make sure that I, that I know before we really settle on something.
Okay. Another issue that they have has to do with the reference to zero emission vehicle. I think you heard the testimony of Mr. Rolfe and he talked about the other states and what their definitions are. So is there a reason why you folks did not want, I mean, I don't know, did you advocate either way? Sorry, I don't sit in EEP, so I'm not sure what you folks advocated for in the prior committee.
Representative, there is an existing HRS for defining a zero emission vehicle. And so there's no need to look to other countries or other states for a definition. We have one and HB 2090 references that definition. And that in turn, our HRS definition in turn references the federal definition of a zero emission vehicle.
Okay. Okay, so it mirrors the federal definition then?
Yes.
Great, thank you. And then finally, this is a little bit complicated. And I was trying to understand Mr. Rolfe's testimony on this with respect to used vehicles under this program. So I guess just starting off from that point, with respect to used vehicles, would they still qualify as the bill is written currently? I'm not sure.
As the bill is written currently, I believe so. I think Mr. Rolfe raised the, raised an important point about MSRP and used vehicle. So that is something I do want to better understand and would like to follow up with Mr. Rolfe about.
Okay, thank you so much for your testimony, Mr. Glenn. Thank you for the clarification on any of this issue.
Thank you, Representative.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask Mr. Rolfe a couple of questions, please?
Sure, you can try to hone them though.
Are you still there?
I don't want to keep us here till 6:40 again, so that'd be great.
Thank you, Representative Hare. Thank you very much. I'll have several comments too, thank you.
Mr. Rolfe, again, I'm trying, I think that I appreciate the testimony of Mr. Glenn and getting clarification from him. That said, so you've heard some of his responses, but I want to move on to this issue of the need to define or clearly the requirement for the manufacturer's warranty as it applies to a used vehicle under this program. I mean, he has concerns about that too, and I think he wants to work with you on that. But could you, again, I need you to kind of explain this issue so that, you know, for the edification of myself, I'm trying to understand, you know, with respect to your contention regarding used vehicles. And I mean, are you, you want them to, do you want them to qualify, correct, for the rebate?
Sure, the pickle is, again, there's a square peg in a round hole here. It says you have to have a warranty that lasts 24 months if you're buying a used vehicle. When you buy a vehicle, a new vehicle has usually a three-year, 36-month warranty. So it means after a year of a new vehicle being used, there's less than 24 months left. So you would eliminate all those used vehicles. So there's a talk about all this happening, but it won't fit into the hole. The other thing too, I really appreciate working with Scott and that whole office, the Energy Office. We appreciate work with everybody. But Scott, motorcycles are also in the definition of the motor vehicle. So you can't just eliminate that out and put it under something called an appropriate entity to buy from that. That was our main concern. There was all discretion granted to a single individual to determine what an appropriate entity is to sell a vehicle. And that meant that you could go outside of the state, you could go anywhere. All those licensing laws were just thrown out. So we said, those are there to protect the customer as our warranties and all these other things. All these laws are here to protect these customers. And that's our role as a trade association, to help auto dealers comply with the laws to make car buying and servicing by the public trouble-free. And so we have this role very much like DCCA with self-policing. And those laws help do all that, so circumventing them very troublesome. I just say back to the, buy a car and get $17,000? Sell it for more than you bought it, like you do with a house, and keep your $17,000? Why would we, why would we create something that does this? Why can't we sit down and figure out how to make this bigger picture work? Instead of coming up with something that has all these strange, when you put the actual dollar amounts in, everything just falls apart.
Yeah, I think that's some of the problems is the unintended consequences, I think, of that. And the last thing is the issue regarding the MSRP. Can you please address that regarding the MSRP and why it may be problematic?
Sure, manufacturers suggested retail price is only that. And it's very different for all the, very different kinds of calculations. The problem is a used vehicle doesn't have an MSRP because the manufacturer doesn't suggest what you should pay for the used vehicle. So you would have to use the word original MSRP. And that would help solve that problem a little bit. Again, I want to point out, we're here to help solve all the difficulties in this bill, but it wasn't done on the HD1. And I don't know if it'll be done on the HD2. And so we've offered an amendment, but we said everything is so complex in this and not addressed and give them too much authority to a single individual or even the PUC docket format, which, you know, I would testify on that. I can tell you the legislature, as Rep. Nishi has said, and you and others, there needs to be oversight, a lot of oversight. And if you don't know what you're agreeing to, because everything is just vague, we couldn't support that. We supported the intent of helping this do this, but leave it all vague and it just, and then when you put numbers in, various numbers, and they don't work, you wonder how it's going to settle out. Anyway, thank you for your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Rolfe. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Representative. Members, any additional questions on HB 2090? Okay, seeing no additional questions, then we will recess for decision-making. Recession.
Okay, reconvening for decision making. My thanks to everybody for joining us today on our 2pm agenda. First up on HB 2230, the recommendation here relating to motor carriers is to defer HB 2230. We just didn't receive a whole lot of supportive testimony, so I think it begs the question of whether or not there's an issue here. So again, to recommendation is to defer on HB 2230. Next on HB 1546 relating to air pollution, noting the opposition from the Attorney General and the Department of Health, based on its conflict with federal law and/or preemption, recommendation members on HB 1546 is also to defer this measure. Next on HB 1884 relating to the statewide traffic code, the recommendation here is to keep this measure moving by inserting a defective date of January 1, 2050 to encourage further discussion on this measure, as well as including technical and non-substantive amendments. Members, any comments or questions on the recommendation?
Mr. Chairman?
Representative Hare.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the recommendation. I think the concern I have with this measure is the testimony that came from the judiciary. Specifically, you know, it states that this bill would basically discourage respondents from installing an interlock, which really do protect and promote public safety. And it says also moreover requiring proof of compliance for these additional requirements would serve to create significant delays in the relicensing process, which would be contrary to the purpose and mission of ADLRO. So respectfully, Mr. Chairman, I'll be voting with reservations.
Thank you, Representative Hare. Members, any other comments or questions on the recommendation? Okay, seeing none then, Vice Chair for the vote, please.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1884 with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye.
Aye.
Representative Hare is reservations. Representative Hashem?
Aye.
Representative Kong?
Aye.
Representative Mizuno?
Aye.
Representative Morikawa?
Aye.
Representative Onishi?
Aye.
Representative Tarnis?
Aye.
Representative Matsumoto?
Aye.
Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Noah also votes aye. Yeah. Thank you. On HB 2110 relating to advance warning for excavation, the recommendation here, my thanks to the PUC as well as the Pest Control Association for working out a suggested amendment. So the recommendation here is to take the Pest Control Association's amendment. Again, that is also a amendment, the PUC is amenable to, as well as inserting a defective date of January 1, 2050, and making technical and non-substantive amendments on this measure. Members, any comments or questions on the recommendation? Okay, seeing none then, Vice Chair for the vote, please.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 2110 with amendments, noting the presence of all members. Are there any reservations? Are there any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Next on HB 2178 relating to tax expenditure accountability, the recommendation here with the concurrence of the ECD chair is to insert a defective date of January 1, 2050, as well as technical and non-substantive amendments to keep this measure moving. Members, any comments or questions on the recommendation? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Vice Chair for the vote, please.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 2178 HD1 with amendments. Are there any reservations? Are there any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members. Next on HB 2227 relating to the Made in Hawaii program, there are members, there was very little supportive testimony here, and I'm also not sure that this belongs in the Department of Commerce and Consumer Affairs, which they feel it does not. So accordingly, although there's some good issues raised here, my recommendation on HB 2227 is going to be to defer this measure. Next on HB 1852 relating to the Employment Compensation Trust Fund, the recommendation is to pass this measure as is. Members, any comments or questions on the recommendation? Okay, seeing none then, Vice Chair for the vote, please.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1852 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Are there any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members. Next on HB 2178 relating to tax expenditure accountability, the recommendation here with the concurrence of the ECD chair is to insert a defective date of January 1, 2050, just to keep discussion going on this very important measure. Members, any comments or questions on the recommendation? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Vice Chair for the vote, please.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 2178 HD1 with amendments. Are there any reservations? Are there any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members. Next on HB 2227 relating to the Made in Hawaii program, there are members, there was very little supportive testimony here, and I'm also not sure that this belongs in the Department of Commerce and Consumer Affairs, which they feel it does not. So accordingly, although there's some good issues raised here, my recommendation on HB 2227 is going to be to defer this measure. Next on HB 1852 relating to the Employment Compensation Trust Fund, the recommendation is to pass this measure as is. Members, any comments or questions on the recommendation? Okay, seeing none then, Vice Chair for the vote, please.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1852 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Are there any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members. Next on HB 2178 relating to tax expenditure accountability, the recommendation here with the concurrence of the ECD chair is to insert a defective date of January 1, 2050, just to keep discussion going on this very important measure. Members, any comments or questions on the recommendation? Okay, seeing none then, Vice Chair for the vote, please.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1884 with amendments, chair and vice chair vote aye. Representative Akino?
Aye.
Representative Hare is reservations. Representative Hashem?
Aye.
Representative Kong?
Aye.
Representative Mizuno?
Aye.
Representative Morikawa?
Aye.
Representative Onishi?
Aye.
Representative Tarnis?
Aye.
Representative Matsumoto?
Aye.
Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Noah also votes aye. Yeah. Thank you. On HB 2110 relating to advance warning for excavation, the recommendation here, my thanks to the PUC as well as the Pest Control Association for working out a suggested amendment. So the recommendation here is to take the Pest Control Association's amendment. Again, that is also a amendment, the PUC is amenable to, as well as inserting a defective date of January 1, 2050, and making technical and non-substantive amendments on this measure. Members, any comments or questions on the recommendation? Okay, seeing none then, Vice Chair for the vote, please.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 2110 with amendments, noting the presence of all members. Are there any reservation? Are there any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Next on HB 2178 relating to tax expenditure accountability, the recommendation here with the concurrence of the ECD chair is to insert a defective date of January 1, 2050, as well as technical and non-substantive amendments to keep this measure moving. Members, any comments or questions on the recommendation? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Vice Chair for the vote, please.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 2178 HD1 with amendments. Are there any reservations? Are there any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members. Next on HB 2227 relating to the Made in Hawaii program, there are members, there was very little supportive testimony here, and I'm also not sure that this belongs in the Department of Commerce and Consumer Affairs, which they feel it does not. So accordingly, although there's some good issues raised here, my recommendation on HB 2227 is going to be to defer this measure. Next on HB 1852 relating to the Employment Compensation Trust Fund, the recommendation is to pass this measure as is. Members, any comments or questions on the recommendation? Okay, seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, please.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1852 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Are there any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Next on HB 2158 relating to the boiler and elevator safety law, the recommendation here is to also pass this measure as is. Members, any comments or questions on the recommendation? Okay, seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, please.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 2158 HD1 as is. Are there any reservation? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Next on HB 2159 relating to workforce development boards, the recommendation is to pass this measure as is. Members, any comments or questions on the recommendation? Okay, thank you. Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, please.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 2159 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Let's see, next on HB 2469. 2469 relating to the Unemployment Compensation Trust Fund, the recommendation here is to pass this measure as is. Members, any comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, please.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 2469 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Are there any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you. Next on HB 2471 relating to adequate reserve fund, the recommendation here is to pass this measure as is. Members, any comments or questions on the recommendation? Okay, seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, please.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 2471 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Next on HB 2178 relating to tax expenditure accountability, the recommendation here with the concurrence of the ECD chair is to insert a defective date of January 1, 2050, as well as technical and non-substantive amendments to keep this measure moving. Members, any comments or questions on the recommendation? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Vice Chair for the vote, please.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 2178 HD1 with amendments. Are there any reservations? Are there any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members. Next on HB 2227 relating to the Made in Hawaii program, there are members, there was very little supportive testimony here, and I'm also not sure that this belongs in the Department of Commerce and Consumer Affairs, which they feel it does not. So accordingly, although there's some good issues raised here, my recommendation on HB 2227 is going to be to defer this measure. Next on HB 1852 relating to the Employment Compensation Trust Fund, the recommendation is to pass this measure as is. Members, any comments or questions on the recommendation? Okay, seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, please.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1852 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Are there any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Thank you, members. Next on HB 1805 relating to cesspools, the recommendation here is to pass this measure as is. Members, any comments or questions on the recommendation? Representative Onishi?
Yes, based on my concerns that I brought up in the hearing, and again, I think someone brought up the fact about the working groups report is coming up at the end of the year, so I'm gonna be voting with reservation.
Thank you, Representative. Members, any other comments or questions?
Chair.
Why don't we go with Representative Morikawa first, and then we'll come to Representative Hare.
Thank you. I share the same concerns as the previous speaker, and I think, I think we need to have the report come back from that working group. That'd be very helpful that, so we can get a really good plan in place and move forward without wasting so much time and energy and monies. So I'll be voting with reservations. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Representative. Members, any other comments or questions?
Chair.
Why don't we go with Representative Morikawa first, and then we'll come to Representative Hare.
Thank you. I share the same concerns as the previous speaker, and I think, I think we need to have the report come back from that working group. That'd be very helpful that, so we can get a really good plan in place and move forward without wasting so much time and energy and monies. So I'll be voting with reservations. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Representative. Members, any other comments or questions?
Chair.
Why don't we go with Representative Morikawa first, and then we'll come to Representative Hare.
Thank you. I share the same concerns as the previous speaker, and I think, I think we need to have the report come back from that working group. That'd be very helpful that, so we can get a really good plan in place and move forward without wasting so much time and energy and monies. So I'll be voting with reservations. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Representative. Members, any other comments or questions?
Chair.
Why don't we go with Representative Morikawa first, and then we'll come to Representative Hare.
Thank you. I share the same concerns as the previous speaker, and I think, I think we need to have the report come back from that working group. That'd be very helpful that, so we can get a really good plan in place and move forward without wasting so much time and energy and monies. So I'll be voting with reservations. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Representative. Members, any other comments or questions?
Chair.
Why don't we go with Representative Morikawa first, and then we'll come to Representative Hare.
Thank you. I share the same concerns as the previous speaker, and I think, I think we need to have the report come back from that working group. That'd be very helpful that, so we can get a really good plan in place and move forward without wasting so much time and energy and monies. So I'll be voting with reservations. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Representative. Members, any other comments or questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do share the same concerns as the two previous speakers, so respectfully, I'll be voting with reservations.
Thank you, Representative. Members, any other comments or questions? Okay, if none, then seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, please.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1805 HD1 as is, noting the reservations of Representatives Hare, Morikawa, and Onishi. Are there any additional reservations? Representative Kong? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members. Next on HB 2188 relating to financing, you know, I think this is a very novel and creative approach, and I recognize that there are still many details yet to be worked out with the concurrence of the EEP chair. I'd like to take the Department of Health's amendments, as well as the Hawaii Green Infrastructure Authority's amendments, and incorporate as well technical non-substantive amendments. And I also want to acknowledge that I think there's still much that needs to be worked on in this bill, if it's going to cross the finish line, but I would like to keep it moving because there is no Senate vehicle moving at this time that I'm aware of. So with that, members, any comments or questions on the recommendation?
Sure.
Representative Onishi?
Yeah, you know, I don't have any concerns really with the commercial part of this bill, but I do have strong concerns about that this, the provision of superseding the initial mortgages on the property. I don't see the reason for that besides just ensuring that the investors have, you know, a guarantee that they're gonna get their money back. So with that, I'm gonna be voting with reservation.
Thank you, Representative, and I appreciate that. I think that's one of the areas that needs additional clarity and further work as well. Representative Hare?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, for the same reasons, you know, on the, the commercial side is not the problem here. The super lean is, is the problem on the residential side. So respectfully, I'll be voting with reservations. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative. Members, any other comments or questions?
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 2188 HD1 with amendments, noting the reservations of Representatives Hare, Morikawa, and Onishi. Are there any additional reservations? Representative Kong?
Okay, thank you, members. Next on HB 2227 relating to the Made in Hawaii program, there are members, there was very little supportive testimony here, and I'm also not sure that this belongs in the Department of Commerce and Consumer Affairs, which they feel it does not. So accordingly, although there's some good issues raised here, my recommendation on HB 2227 is going to be to defer this measure. Next on HB 1852 relating to the Employment Compensation Trust Fund, the recommendation is to pass this measure as is. Members, any comments or questions on the recommendation? Okay, seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, please.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1852 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Are there any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Next on HB 2158 relating to the boiler and elevator safety law, the recommendation here is to also pass this measure as is. Members, any comments or questions on the recommendation? Okay, seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, please.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 2158 HD1 as is. Are there any reservation? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Next on HB 2159 relating to workforce development boards, the recommendation is to pass this measure as is. Members, any comments or questions on the recommendation? Okay, thank you. Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, please.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 2159 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Let's see, next on HB 2469. 2469 relating to the Unemployment Compensation Trust Fund, the recommendation here is to pass this measure as is. Members, any comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, please.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 2469 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Are there any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you. Next on HB 2471 relating to adequate reserve fund, the recommendation here is to pass this measure as is. Members, any comments or questions on the recommendation? Okay, seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, please.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 2471 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Next, members, on HB 1893 relating to the Oahu Regional Healthcare System, the recommendation here is to pass this measure as is. I would like to note in the committee report, though, that should this measure continue to move, the question of civil service status and the employees should continue to be explored. Members, any comments or questions on the recommendation? Okay, seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, please.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1893 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Next on HB 2515 relating to the Department of Health, the recommendation here with the concurrence of the Health and Human Services and Housing and Homelessness Chair, as well as the Energy and Environmental Protection Chair, is to insert a defective date of January 1, 2050, just to keep discussion going on this very important measure. Members, any comments or questions on the recommendation? Okay, thank you. Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, please.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 2515 HD1 with amendments. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Next on HB 2139 relating to the Residential Landlord Code, the recommendation is to pass this measure as is. Members, any comments or questions on the recommendation? Okay, seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, please.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 2139 HD1 as is. Are there any reservations? Reservations from Representative Kong? Any additional reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Thank you, members. Next on HB 1805 relating to cesspools, the recommendation here is to pass this measure as is. Members, any comments or questions on the recommendation? Representative Onishi?
Yes, based on my concerns that I brought up in the hearing, and again, I think someone brought up the fact about working groups' report is coming up at the end of the year, so I'm gonna be voting with reservation.
Thank you, Representative. Members, any other comments or questions?
Chair.
Why don't we go with Representative Morikawa first, and then we'll come to Representative Hare.
Thank you. I share the same concerns as the previous speaker, and I think, I think we need to have the report come back from that working group. That'd be very helpful that, so we can get a really good plan in place and move forward without wasting so much time and energy and monies. So I'll be voting with reservations. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Representative. Members, any other comments or questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do share the same concerns as the two previous speakers, so respectfully, I'll be voting with reservations.
Thank you, Representative. Members, any other comments or questions? Okay, if none, then seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, please.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 1805 HD1 as is, noting the reservations of Representatives Hare, Morikawa, and Onishi. Are there any additional reservations? Representative Kong? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members. Next on HB 2088 relating to financing, you know, I think this is a very novel and creative approach, and I recognize that there are still many details yet to be worked out with the concurrence of the EEP chair. I'd like to take the Department of Health's amendments, as well as the Hawaii Green Infrastructure Authority's amendments, and incorporate as well technical non-substantive amendments. And I also want to acknowledge that I think there's still much that needs to be worked on in this bill, if it's going to cross the finish line, but I would like to keep it moving because there is no Senate vehicle moving at this time that I'm aware of. So with that, members, any comments or questions on the recommendation?
Sure.
Representative Onishi?
Yeah, you know, I don't have any concerns really with the commercial part of this bill, but I do have strong concerns about that this, the provision of superseding the initial mortgages on the property. I don't see the reason for that besides just ensuring that the investors have, you know, a guarantee that they're gonna get their money back. So with that, I'm gonna be voting with reservation.
Thank you, Representative, and I appreciate that. I think that's one of the areas that needs additional clarity and further work as well. Representative Hare?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, for the same reasons, you know, on the, the commercial side is not the problem here. The super lean is, is the problem on the residential side. So respectfully, I'll be voting with reservations. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative. Members, any other comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, please.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 2088 HD1 with amendments, noting the reservations of Representatives Hare and Onishi. Are there any additional reservations? Representative Kong? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you, members. Next on HB 2195 relating to cesspools. On HB 2195, I'd also like to take the Department of Health's amendment here, which mirrors some of what we've discussed, and with the concurrence of the EEP chair. Members, any comments or questions on the recommendation? Okay, seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, please.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB 2195 HD1 with amendments. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you, members. Next on HB 2090 relating to zero emission transport. I really appreciate the great discussion we've had. I think this is, this is a good aspirational concept that still probably needs a whole lot of finessing and refinement. A Senate vehicle is not moving, but I would like to keep this discussion going. And so I'd like to make the following amendments, taking up the Hawaii State Energy Offices amendments on the qualifying vehicle, which is similar to what the Hawaii Automotive Field Dealers Association also asked for, making various technical and non-substantive amendments, and including in the committee report that I'd like to encourage the administration. While I know flexibility is a central tenet of this bill, I do share the concerns raised by some. I do share the concerns raised by some, including by some stakeholders that this this bill lacks a whole lot of specificity, and I think just in fairness to the industry, they probably need a whole lot more to go on if this bill is gonna cross the finish line. Members, any comments or questions on the recommendation? Representative Onishi.
I really appreciate your consideration in the report of our concerns. I do have an appreciation that the P U C may be able to treat this as a docket item. I just don't see how feasible it is for them to do a docket every year to establish the parameters for this program. I guess for more accountability, I would have, I would like to see some of the parameters set in this measure so that we know exactly what we're voting.
Yeah, that's a very, that's a very fair critique.
So I'll be voting with reservation.
Thank you, Representative Onishi. Members, any other comment? Representative Hare.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do echo the comments of the previous speaker. I have additional concerns with respect to, you know, particularly the the issues with respect to not having clarification on where the cars would be purchased, and I'm talking well, we could even be talking about the mopeds or the other forms of transportation, that they would not be required to be purchased in the state of Hawaii, thereby circumventing the general excise tax collected, and yet a person would still be able to collect that, or be eligible for the rebate. And for the other reasons, I think, stated by the Hawaii Automobile Dealers Association, I think, you know, it's a good bill, but it unfortunately, the devil's in the detail has to be fleshed out. It's unfortunately, I don't think we're there yet. So respectfully, Chair, I'll be voting with reservations.
Thank you, Representative Hare. Members, any further comments? Okay, seeing none then, thank you, Vice Chair for the vote, please.
The recommendation of the chair is to pass HB twenty ninety H D one with amendments noting the reservations of Representatives Hare and Onishi. Are there any additional reservations? Representative Kong and Representative Morikawa? Any additional? Any noes? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you so much, members, and thank you to everyone for joining us on our agenda today. This committee meeting is adjourned.